Okay, yes, we have a full house. We will settle down and get started now. If we can have the roll call, please.
Newton?
Here.
Swift?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Kirline?
Here.
Gonzalez Parber?
Here.
Ackerman?
Here.
Chair Fragoso?
Here. Approval of the agenda. Does staff have any changes? Does the Planning Commission have any suggested changes to the agenda? Not hearing any. Can we move approval?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, agenda approved. We will -- we have a nice, large audience tonight. It's good to see everybody. We do have some meeting protocols. For those of you who have not been to a commission meeting or a council meeting before, basically respectful behavior is what we ask for and community participation. So with that, we will move on to public comments on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to address the commission on anything not on the agenda, this is your chance to step up to the mic. And not seeing anyone go in for that mic, we'll dispense with the consent calendar since we have no items, and we'll move right into our first public hearing, which is 200 Toyon Road, Application 1740, Hill Area Residential Development Permit, Design Review, Excavation, Retaining Wall Height Variances, Exception to the 20-foot wide Public Roadway Requirement to Construct a Two-Story 4,400-plus-square-foot Four Bedroom Three-and-a-Half-Bath Residence plus an accessory unit. If we could have that staff report, please.
Okay, so the proposed project consists of the following. A) Construction of a two-story, 30-foot, 10-inch-tall, 4,948-square-foot residential structure consisting of a 4,463-square-foot main residence with 3,805 square feet of area on the upper main floor and 658 square feet of living space on the lower floor, which includes a pond. B) A 485-square-foot accessory dwelling unit on the upper story of the structure. C) An attached 504-square-foot carport on the south end of the upper story. And the staff report incorrectly indicates that there's 1,020 square feet of storage area on the lower level. That has been removed from the project. The storage areas are no longer proposed. There's also proposed a total of 2,285 square feet of decks on the downhill east side of the residence. E) The construction of a 459-foot-long, 16-foot-wide access driveway extension on the Toyon Road right-of-way with a 79-foot-long fire-equipment pull-out widening the driveway to 24 feet and a fire-apparatus hammerhead turnaround located 100 feet south of the residential structure. It also includes re-grading of an 80-foot-long section of an existing hiking trail that connects from the public open space west of the Toyon Road right-of-way to the proposed driveway and installation of two 15,000-gallon water tanks. The total proposed project grading consists of 1,615 cubic yards of cut and 856 cubic yards of fill for a net offhaul of 759 cubic yards. The residence complies with the setback height, floor area ratio, lot coverage regulations of the RS-6 Zone District where the property is located. It does require a number of discretionary permits, and I'll start with the Hill Area Residential Development Permit. The purpose of the Hill Area Residential Development Permit is to encourage the maximum retention of natural topographic features, to minimize grading of hillside areas, to provide a safe means of ingress and egress to and within hillside areas, to minimize water runoff and soils erosion during and after construction, to prevent the loss of life, reduce injuries and property damage, and to minimize economic dislocations from geologic hazards, and to ensure that infill development on hillside lots is of a size and scale appropriate to the property and is consistent with other properties in the vicinity under the same zone classification. The proposed project is inconsistent with the Hill Area Residential Development Permit Development Standards as follows. The use of the retaining walls extending more than 450 feet and reaching over 17 feet in height in some locations demonstrates the inability of the proposed project to blend in with the natural terrain. The driveway to the center of the site, flanked by retaining walls that reach up to 17 feet in height, adversely affects uphill and downhill wildlife movement and does not minimize the disruption of existing ecosystems of the site. The town engineer has reviewed the entire body of information provided by the applicant on the project, and he believes that the remaining outstanding issues that he has concerns about can be addressed at the building permit stage should the project be approved. But he's indicated that routing all the drainage from the improvements to the natural drainage swale north of the house could allow the construction to occur without increasing the landslide potential of the property. With regards to the house siting and design, they do not comply with the Purpose Section of the Hill Area Residential Development Ordinance. The house has been designed with an elongated footprint that is 163 feet long and including the carport attached to the south side of the structure. It totals 187 feet in length. The largely single-story design with up to 20 feet of slope under the building footprint results in the visual mass and bulk of a structure almost twice its size. The siting of the house is similarly problematic. The site's extreme slope constraints combined with the proposed residential location results in a driveway that requires excessive retaining walls on both the uphill and downhill sides. The thousands of square feet of impervious surface created by the lengthy driveway and large roof area result in excessive runoff. Project also requires a design review permit. The design review criteria contained in the town code are used in reviewing a proposal for a new residence. These criteria include but are not limited to the following. The proposed development shall create a well-composed design harmoniously related to other facilities in the immediate area and to the total setting as seen from hills and other key vantage points in the community. Another criteria is that the size and design of the structure shall be considered for the purpose of determining that the structure is in proportion to its building site and that it has balance and unity among its external features so as to present a harmonious appearance. Another criteria is the extent to which the structure conforms to the general character of other structures in the vicinity. And another criteria is the extent to which natural features, including trees, shrubs, creeks, and rocks, and the natural grade of the site are to be retained. As indicated above, the proposed residence's large square footage is already larger than most of the residences found throughout the Toyon Drive neighborhood and the town. The proposed project will also require the removal of 102 trees. The structure would be visible from parcels on Upper Ridge Road, Fawn Ridge, portions of Bellinas Road, Cascade Road, Crest Road, and Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. The structure does not comply with the design review criteria. It does not conform to the general character of other structures in the vicinity. It requires a significant amount of site disturbance for grading and building the driveway, the water tank pad, the house foundation, and the supply lines. The construction will also remove a large swath of mature trees from a 636-foot-long section of the hillside. Residences throughout the hillsides of Fairfax are typically designed with relatively small footprints and floor plans that reflect the slope by stepping down the hillside and following the hillside contours. With regards to the excavation permit that is required, projects are required to obtain an excavation permit from the Planning Commission if the construction will require the excavation and fill of amounts of over 100 cubic yards. This project would require the excavation and fill of 2,471 cubic yards of material, which will require 75 to 85 large dump truck trips using Toyon Drive, portions of which are not town-maintained. As noted elsewhere in this staff report, the project will be visible from numerous public and private viewing areas around the town. If a less conspicuous alternative building design were pursued with development location closer to the existing end of the paved portion of Toyon Road, it would still afford the developer an extensive vista views while presenting a much smaller visual impact to the community. With regards to the retaining wall height variance, which is required for the driveway walls that exceed six feet in height, in order to approve retaining wall height variances, the commission must be able to make findings that include the finding that approving the variance will not be a grant of special privilege. In the past 31 years, the town has never granted a retaining wall height variance to allow the construction of a retaining wall that reaches 17 feet in height. This fact and the reality that a residential structure might potentially be located much closer to the end of the already-developed portion of Toyon Drive and require much smaller retaining walls would make approval of this request a grant of special privilege. Conversely, granting such variances might set a precedence for future requests for over-height retaining walls. The project also requires an encroachment permit for the private driveway access to the house that the owner is requesting approval to put in the public roadway easement. The applicant has proposed a 16-foot-wide private driveway to be located mostly within the public easement. The town attorney does not support the proposed private driveway development in the public easement and recommends that the project be redesigned to relocate and minimize the private access and parking improvements within the public easement. The applicant has not demonstrated that he is unable to enjoy a substantial use of his property without using a substantial portion of the public right-of-way for a private The project does not conform to the 2010-2012 Fairfax General Plan goals, and there's a number of them that we've listed in the staff report from the land-use element of the general plan. And therefore, we're recommending that the Planning Commission deny Application 17-40 by adopting Resolution 17-38, setting forth the findings for the project denial. And that would conclude our report.
Thank you, Linda. Very, very thorough report. Are there any questions of staff before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Linda. On page 11 of the staff report, where you list out the general plan land use goals, objectives, and policies under 5.11, there's a unnumbered one that I think should be 5.12, and that carries out in the resolution as well.
Thank you.
And I also noted the correspondence from Marin County Open Space about the Napa Falls Indigo, and there was some mention of a report from the applicant regarding, I guess, the Napa Falls Indigo and the presence of spotted owls. Did I miss that in the report?
I did not go over that, but you did -- it should have been folded into your plans in this big, bulky thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Linda, I have a question about -- it's also on page 11. You refer to the Fairfax Open Space Committee writing a letter regarding approval of a resolution by the town council. Can you tell us a little bit more about that? I'm sorry, it's a resolution identifying this property as a priority for preservation.
Okay, yes. Yeah, so the council approved a resolution. The Open Space Committee, and I think we have someone from the Open Space Committee here in case I'm wrong, they created a list of properties that they felt could be beneficial as open space, and it was made part of our general plan. So it's contained in the appendix portion of your general plan. And I believe the resolution just approved that list. Am I correct about that?
Excuse me, sir. Could you turn on the mic and tell us your name, please?
Certainly, only if you call me sir again.
Okay, sir.
Hi, Norma, how you doing? My name is Jack Judkins. I'm a member of the Fairfax Open Space Committee. So there was an early resolution at a point in time that Mr. Ross expressed an interest in selling the property to the town. We were exploring that option. We went to the town. The town agreed that this was a property suitable as open space, having many of the characteristics that were identified in the then-general plan and in the Open Space Committee's ordinance as being appropriate for preservation as open space. That was step one. Step two was we -- oh, the general plan has an inventory, and that inventory likewise identified properties within the town that, again, had characteristics that warranted consideration of protection of that property as open space. The third thing that occurred was several years ago, the Association of Bay Area Governments requested all of the local jurisdictions to identify properties within their planning area that were considered by that jurisdiction to be a priority for preservation as a conservation area. And this was, again, one of the properties identified, approved by the town, and then also approved by the Association of Bay Area Governments as a priority conservation area. That's the brief history.
Thank you.
That's interesting. Thank you.
I have some questions and corrections. So Toyon Drive.
I said it correctly once.
Right. And then page four, the second paragraph, first sentence, it says on August 16, 2002, the Planning Commission approved for the 14-foot-wide. So I think it's missing variance. Is that -- did it refer to variance?
Approved the exception.
Exception.
Thank you.
And then on page nine, second paragraph for the excavations, I think it's got the wrong code cite.
Okay.
It's citing 17.20.080, and I think it should be 12.20.080.
You are correct.
Okay. Then you mentioned the tree removals, and you mentioned 102 trees. In the Arboris Report, I think they broke it out by the house and then the roadway. So the roadway had another -- in addition to the 102 trees, that would be the fair trees, not the one for the house.
Right.
So it's a larger amount, you're saying. Of 102, then the roadway had, I think, 42 trees to be removed for that.
That is correct, so, yes, so it's actually 144. Okay. I thought I had gotten all the ones. What I was trying to tell, give you was the number that's coming out for the development, because there are some recommended for removal just because they're not in good shape, and those are outside the footprint.
Right, right. And those were -- and that applied both to the house and the roadway. So the roadway, I think I had 42 were trees that were in fair shade to be removed, but they also had identified a certain amount of trees in that roadway area that should be removed because they were poor as well.
Right, that is correct, because I remember doing that calculation, too. I don't know how it didn't get in the report. So for the record, 144 trees are coming out for the construction of the access driveway and the house. Thank you for catching that.
And then you mentioned that the storage/crawl space isn't a part of -- can you explain? Because it still has that under.
So the original submittal many years ago included an entire storage floor underneath the main living level of the house. That has been removed from this proposal. Now there's just the lower floor with the pond. They're no longer proposing that the entire understory be storage.
So no crawl space then under that?
Well, there's a crawl space.
Crawl space still, but no storage.
But there's no storage with a level floor. Correct. That was from the previous project, and it's no longer part of this project.
Okay. And then my last question, and maybe this is for the applicant, I'm not sure, but we've got two 15,000-gallon water tanks. So I'm a little confused as to the requirement or need for water tanks for this project versus just running, like every other house, has the water from the.
Water main, yeah. You should ask the applicant that.
All right, thanks.
Why they've chosen not to extend the water main and then a lateral, yeah.
Okay, I had my burning -- actually, you took care of most of my questions, but my other question is note that there were an attempt to discuss alternative sites with the applicant, and they couldn't. So I was wondering what those alternative sites would do differently.
Well, we have all -- when someone's proposing a project that's this far into a site, we usually ask them to present some kind of information to support their choice of this location, because there's 450 feet of site where other houses could be located. And the applicant has never provided us with any concrete information for why this house couldn't be redesigned and relocated closer to the improved portion of Toyon Road, decreasing the number of trees to be removed from the site, decreasing the amount of excavation, and just decreasing the general disturbance to the hillside. And we've never really been provided with any concrete information.
Okay, so they're just -- they're simply not getting back to you on that question?
That's correct.
Okay. And did you have -- but did staff have some specific alternative sites in mind?
No. You know, we don't do that, because we don't have soils engineers to go out and do the test borings and figure out where bedrock is. We know that the slopes down from the path, the steepness, are not any steeper than many of the hillsides in Fairfax that have homes on them. So we don't see any reason why the house couldn't be moved closer to Toyon. But it's not really our job to find a location for the applicant. That's him to get his experts out there to provide the concrete, the soils information and the analysis of the trees to figure out the best site that will have the least impact on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Again, back to the Napa Falls Indigo, now that I've found it. I'm reading that report by Shelley Benson, and on page two, there's a map. And the yellow dots represent the patches.
Correct.
And the blue area represents the plant survey area.
Correct.
And so the plant survey area discovered the plant.
It discovered the plant, but it discovered it not on this property, but in the public right-of-way and in the Marin County Open Space area. So if you follow the two lines of Toyon Drive, and you can see the shadow behind the blue circle that she studied, and if you look at where the three dots are, they're in the public roadway easement. One of them's in the public roadway easement. One of them is half in the easement and half on Marin County Open Space property. And then the third lowest one is completely on the open space district land, which backs up what the open space district told me, which is that they had found the Napa Falls Indigo on open space district land. That's why we asked him to do the study in the first place.
Okay, I'm a little confused, but I'll figure it out as we go on.
Okay, I can come up and -- okay.
I have maybe an oddball question for you. At what point is an environmental review triggered on a large property?
Generally speaking, what you're looking for is potential for significant impacts. So if it met certain thresholds, for example, the potential for listed species. With this one, because it became fairly clear to staff that the recommendation was going to be not to do, not to recommend approval of this project, under the California Environmental Quality Act, you're not required to do environmental analysis. So that determination was put in advance. However, for example, if it was determined that no other alternative seemed to be feasible, there's a possibility that the extent of the work proposed for this project may trigger some sort of focused environmental review. It can't be seen. I think the thrust of what we confine the review to was simply, was there a way to support this project? And if not, was it necessary to go through the sequin determination?
I understand. And a positive recommendation would very likely have required at least a focused environmental review on this.
Well, it certainly raises some questions with respect to the grading and the drainage and things like that. I wasn't involved in the earlier phases of the project, so I would probably want to sit down with the town engineer.
Okay.
But I think we'll also hear some comments from people who are concerned about the project.
Sure, sure.
And that's part of the process, is the possibility of doing a scoping session and trying to determine if there is some information on the record that might warrant that type of an evaluation.
That's a good answer for me. Further questions of staff? We can then ask the applicant to step forward. Please give us your name and.
Good evening, town staff, commissioners. My name is Dan Hughes. I am with DVC Group. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I'm here representing the applicant tonight. Also here is Jerry Fraes, the project architect. And we do have a co-applicant here. Debbie is with us, and she's going to say a few words. I just wanted to say, start with a request. The project has a very long history, as, you know, dating back to 2002 and before. This applicant has a long history. He's been working on this project for quite some time. We've been working with staff and, you know, over the past year and more than a year, we've been requested to provide additional information, geotechnical investigations, which we've done, hydraulic analysis, which we've done, additional biologic studies, which we've done. We were very well aware that staff had some concerns about the project. I think we were a little bit taken aback when the staff report came out less than a week ago. Again, we were very well aware that staff had concerns. Again, we were very well aware that staff had concerns, but I think we were surprised at the, the extent of the concerns and the magnitude of the concerns. And with the staff report coming out less than a week ago, we didn't really have time to, to digest it fully. So, with that in mind, we are requesting that we change gears a little bit and, and respectfully request that we, we change the intent of tonight's discussion. We greatly appreciate the time that we're being offered and, and your time and attention to the project. What I think we would like to request is that this is not a planning commission hearing where we are looking for a vote of approval or denial. What we would like to do is change the intent to be more of a study session or a design review type session if we could. And I hate to totally change gears and throw a wrench in this whole thing, but if we could turn this into a study session or a design review, we would greatly appreciate hearing all the concerns, listening to what everybody has to say, and taking that with us and, and digesting that along with the staff report and taking a look at the project after the fact. So I just wanted to make that request upfront, you know, get the, the feeling of, of staff and of the commissioners and, you know, we are here to answer any questions that we have. Jerry can take this a little bit further and give, you know, an abbreviated presentation. But again, we would like to view this as a study session, if you will, or a design review hearing if, if the commission would be so willing. Thank you.
Can I ask you, well, one question for you and one question for staff. Were you involved with this project? I remember in a prior life, I was in the, on this planning commission back in early 2000. Were you involved with the project when it came before the town at that time?
No, I was not.
Okay. And then my question for staff is, or maybe we should discuss it among the commission, the, are options regarding the applicant's request that the public hearing be turned into a study session? I don't know. My, my senses were here for a public hearing and the public, and the public is here for just that reason?
Well, and I don't want to-
Any guidance would be helpful.
I don't want to speak on behalf of Linda because she has the extensive history with this project. And I know that we haven't seen alternatives presented to staff in the past. It's kind of unfortunate when you get to a point where the staff reports are written and the information upon which that analysis is based has theoretically been provided. I understand that, yes, sometimes when you actually see the written staff report and the recommendation, it causes a certain change in, in approach, but at the same time, there's been ample opportunity, I believe, over the years to look at alternatives. And certainly, I believe Linda has been very clear that that's something that the applicant needed to do. I, I appreciate that the applicant appears to be willing to consider that. I'd like to see what the scope of their alternatives might be. And then I think ultimately, it's up to the commission. I would say that if we're looking at alternative sites, we're dealing with a completely new review, soils report, engineering analysis, et cetera.
That's, that's-
So, depending on the extent of the changes proposed, I mean, it could be something fairly minor, which wouldn't really change the project much, or it could be something substantive, which in essence changes the entire project.
Thank you.
And I just want to remind the commission that this is the same recommendation that, that we were making the last time this project came before the commission. When the commission asked for a redesign, they continued the application off calendar to give the applicant chance to redesign, and it didn't happen, and he eventually withdrew the application. So, this, this recommendation should not come as a surprise to the property owner. It's the second time we've made it.
Actually, I, I do recall the driveway more than anything else in this project. And I'd like the commissioner's comments, but it's my opinion that the project as it is drawn before us today is here for public review and that we should hold that review and hear public comments on the existing project should the applicant decide to revise the plans. It's my understanding that we can't really review a new application at this time. We can only review what is currently before us. If the commission says, "I'd like you to tweak this," some perhaps not major, major concession or condition, that would be acceptable, but not review of a revised project that's not before us. I would rather make a decision on what we have, but I'm open to the commissioner's thoughts.
I have a question just about the process because the planning commission is also responsible for the design review and it's been combined, correct? And so, in a design review process, maybe we don't have as much technical information as we have now? And, you know, I kind of would hate to see all that work go to waste, but is it an option to maybe hear the public, hear our feedback? And I don't know how this would affect the design, but that then continue, do we have time to continue the project so that the applicant can respond to the public and our comments?
Linda can, can discuss the possibility of, or what the permit streamlining act requirements are. It should be noted, and again, the chair touched on this, is that the commission is not here tonight to comment substantively on a significantly different alternative in terms of noticing and things of that nature. The applicant, if they want to present that, they can do so, but significant changes would have to either result in a, in a decision on the current project tonight or a continuation and kind of restarting from scratch in essence. So, I think some of this depends on what the applicant brings forward tonight. But I would recommend definitely hearing from the public on the current proposal. As Linda has pointed out, this current iteration in virtually the same format has been around for a long time, so it may be appropriate to make a decision on this iteration. And then if they are seriously contemplating an alternative design, they, there's certainly nothing to prevent them from re-submitting. And at that time, we could start with a fresh slate.
That would be my preference, my preferred way of proceeding now. Yes, sir, you're, you're champion at the bit.
Yeah, no, I just, I, a couple of points of clarification, and I, I just don't want any misunderstandings. I did not mean to throw a wrench into this, and I certainly did not intend to undermine people who are here to speak tonight. I, I'm not trying to cut that off. The, the request to have a study type session is to hear concerns. The people are here to speak. I, I think they should have that opportunity. I'm not here to stop that. I, Linda had said that, you know, there, there was a past recommendation. I'm not denying that. I understand there was a past recommendation. I didn't say, and I didn't mean to say that that was a surprise. We knew that, what the past recommendation was. We, we understood that. We were just surprised at, at the amount of concerns and the magnitude of the concerns. I'm also not here to present a new project. That's not what we're here to do. We're not here to present a new project. I think what we would like to do is hear concerns with this, the existing project that's before you. And we have a couple of, what we would like to leave here with is a couple click, points of clarification on some things that we're looking at doing, get opinions from the commission and find out opinions of the commission. So if we do leave here, we have some clarity on some items, so we can take that into consideration when we look at the project again.
Okay.
If, if, and if there is concerns about having the public hearing and taking a vote, instead of a study session or a design review, I, what I would request is just a continuance. If, if that's what it comes down to is just, just a continuance, so we can take a step back and make some revisions to the project.
I understand your requests and I can see why you would want to proceed in that way, but I think at this point, it's premature for us to make the decision on the, on your request. I think at this point, we need to move forward with the public, public hearing. You will certainly hear comments from the commission and the public, and I'm rather sure you'll be quite clear on what the comments are when you leave here today.
Understood.
Who you should all be.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we, so that wasn't the end. I, I just wanted to make that request. I don't know, Jerry, would you like to say, or do we want to move on to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I guess that is.
Can, can we do questions from us before, to the applicant before?
Yes, we could have some questions to the applicant.
Okay. So my question goes back to those two water tanks. So the, I'm unclear as to the reason for the two water tanks and purpose of those as opposed to bringing in just a regular water district line.
My understanding is-
So if you could explain that?
Yes. My understanding is we have inadequate public fire service at that location. We don't have the pressure necessary. So the water tanks are being proposed to provide fire protection.
So there's inadequate pressure for just the sprinklers or fire service or just for normal use in the house?
Not for normal use of the house. Domestic, you can do, you can put pressure boosters and things like that, inline pressure boosters and things like that. It's for fire service. I don't know if it's for hydrant sprinklers. I'm not really sure. I haven't been part of those conversations with the fire department, so I can't answer that question.
Okay, so that would be a continuing question then on this project for me.
From what I, from what I read, it, it looked like there was a requirement for a pump, a pump house that would be fire, fire hardened. So that sounded to me like the idea was that in the event of a wildland fire, that water would be used to provide, to provide fire service, but that, that was just my assumption.
Can you speak to that?
It's for, it's for the, it's for the fire protection, but it's just for this house. It's not to put out fires in the open space district. Yeah, I spoke with the fire department today. They made that very clear.
And I did see something about that being potable water, which I wasn't, wasn't clear why it would be, but-
Rather than, than recycled or filtered?
Yeah. And that, I guess the source of that water is going to be the water district, right? It'll be, those tanks will be filled up from-
Yeah, I, I would, I would probably have to check with fire and maybe with MMWD because I know that some tanks are not filled with potable water, but so-
So these are, these are not rainwater catchment?
No.
I guess, maybe, maybe that's the question. Okay.
So it looks like though, on the tanks, that I thought I saw a water line from the tanks to the house. So, in my looking at it, I made the assumption that the water district line fills the tanks and then the house is served from those tanks.
No, I believe that the tanks are solely for fire suppression and not for use of water within the property, within the house. Any other questions?
I have a question about the tanks. How tall are they?
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay. I have another question. I'm not a civil engineer, so I was looking at C2, there's a profile of the driveway, and there's a term on there that says "right wall." And I was trying, I couldn't understand-
Retaining, I'm, I'm not seeing what you're seeing. My guess is it's an abbreviation for retaining wall.
No, I'm sorry. It says "finished grade at right wall."
So finished grade at retaining wall, I'm guessing?
Okay, yeah. And so, when you say right wall, does, is that the same as north wall or is it?
I think it's just an abbreviation for retaining, right retaining wall.
No, it says right.
Oh, so it would be, if, if you're going up the profile, if I'm going up the roadway, there's a right and a left.
Okay.
So it's access, you're walking up a-
So it's, it's in terms of traffic direction?
Yes.
Okay.
So there'll be a, there'll be a stationing from, you know, zero to 100. If you're starting at zero, walking towards 100 in that alignment, there will be a left and a right.
Okay.
Left wall, right wall.
So, okay, that makes sense. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions of the applicants?
Well, I just have this, this location idea. I mean, why, why is the house located where it is so that it has to be hung off the side of a hill in, you know, full visibility of the town when it could be located? You know, the idea here is we try to cluster, you know, encourage clustering of, of buildings so that, you know, sewer lines, water lines, et cetera, don't have to be extended to some, you know, more inconvenient, in, in some inconvenient or expensive way. And then the other, I mean, the other, the other negative to me is the 16-foot wide driveway, which seems restrictive for fire access and, you know, is, is not a precedent we don't, we want to create necessarily, not, not to have a 20-foot proper drive. And, and the third issue I have was, was location of the house where it is kind of maximizes the negative impacts, whereas some other location might, I mean, I'm sure we'll hear from the public, but some other location might be better to minimize, you know, the visual impacts and, and environmental impacts. So the real question is why is there no alternative location with an application that's been denied once and, or recommended denied once, I don't know the history, and is now in a, you know, hasn't been changed much and hasn't tried to come back to say, "Well, you know, here's an alternative." Why is there no flexibility?
So, I'm not going to answer to, I can answer one reason why the home was placed where it was. The engineering answer is the slope of the land there is less than it is in other locations. It's at just below 50% slope where it's currently proposed along the roadway on, on this view as it goes to the right or towards where the existing road ends. The slopes are steeper in that location. That's one reason. I haven't been part of the project since its inception, so if, if Jerry or Debbie would like to speak to why it's located there, they can speak further on that. But strictly from a slope basis, it's the least steep area of the site. That's the one location. With regard to the roadway width, the wider the road becomes, the more cut, the more fill, and the taller retaining walls are required. The more narrow it is, the less cut, less height in retaining walls are required. So earlier it was a 14-foot. That's been changed to 16-foot. That has been coordinated with the fire department, and the fire department has signed off on the 16-foot width driveway. I think I-
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
If there are no more questions, why don't we move into the public hearing? Okay, so if the public has comments, please step forward. Give us your name. I see the light is on. If the light is red, the light is on, and you can speak. Jack, you're-
Hi, Jack Judkins again with the Fairfax Open Space Committee. All I want to do, because I don't want to be too repetitive, is point you to our letter of April 27th, 2016, in which we addressed our various concerns from an open space committee perspective on this development. I mean, I think if I were to put it in a nutshell, what Commissioner Green said was absolutely right. You couldn't go about designing a project that had greater impact on natural resources, view sheds, trees on this piece of property than end up with the results here. That result almost seems to be, how can I most create an impact on those various resources? And that point, I'm sure, was made emphatically back in the early 2000s. That point was made when the project came to us. That point has been made succinctly, clearly by the staff reports. I'm not quite sure what additional guidance the applicant would need, but this is so out of scale and so impactful on the visual and natural resources of the site that, that it just should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Please step forward.
Before I start, may I give you these photographs?
Uh, sure.
And before you start the clock, I wanted to just mention, wanted to just mention that our neighbor on the upside at 57 Ridge- that our neighbor on the upside at 57 Ridge is in Asia right now, the Camerons. They couldn't be here, so she's asked me, they've asked me to put her comments together with mine, so it, it may run an extra minute, if that's okay. Thank you. Bruce McDermott and Lynn McDermott here at 53 Ridge. We lived at 181 Toyon for five years and are very familiar with the area on which Mr. Ross is attempting to build. The trailhead entrance to his planned driveway is at the parking cul-de-sac next to the mailboxes for 181 Toyon and two other homes. In February of 2016, we moved to 53 Ridge across the beautiful ravine and valley. We look back directly across this valley to the planned development area. I can assure you that none of us on Ridge, Vaughn Ridge, Madrone, Scenic bought our homes because we enjoy narrow windy roads. We, we bought them for the stunningly beautiful and natural view, definitely not to see half the hillside torn away for an overly massive development. Our neighbors who currently live on Toyon, adjacent to the subject property, will speak to you about the potential damage locally to the paved road and the difficulty with, with traffic and the practical impacts. I have three specific concerns, along with our neighbor at 57 Ridge. First is the project is inconsistent with the hillside area residential development standards. It is visibly massive, three buildings totaling 5,452 square feet, plus decks and parking, and is out of scale with any homes in the area. The length of its footprint is equal to or greater than those of the good earth market or the Fairfax market. The average home in the area, give or take, is about 2,700 square feet, as ours was at 181 Toyon. Two, the requested variances from a 20-foot driveway down to 16 and the six-foot retaining wall limit increase, wall limit increase to 17 feet should not be approved. Hopefully, all of you saw the photos and video clips we submitted. You can see that much of the chosen acreage has up to a 65-degree slope. I know this to be so because I went back last week and climbed around there with the help of a hiking pole. I saw only one-story pole, although this was probably a historic story pole, maybe it isn't a current one. But if you ripped down the trees around it, you would be staring directly across at our house and others on Ridge Road and part of Scenic. If you live in the immediate area, you know what happens during the winter rains and storms. You can, you can literally hear from our house the rushing water sound from the bottom of the ravine where there are two streams. It's actually beautiful to hear, and because of the trees and the foliage, most of the hillsides are very much intact. However, if the requested development is built, it will create enormous erosion problems. And I think this was referenced back in August in a report by town engineer Ray Rosinski. Now moving on to my neighbor's comments. Three, when we lived at 181 Toyon, we were, we would often hear owls and would rush out the front door to the mailbox trailhead about 50 yards away, and we watched spotted owls sitting at the top of the same tree. What will happen to their habitat if this project is developed? Taking down at least 144 trees is not good. Then removing 2,470 cubic yards of dirt is not good. That's a half a million gallons if it were a liquid. Landslides can be a real problem in this area, as you all know. Just look at Tamalpais Road last winter, and I'm not sure whether we've been able to fix that yet. And there are spots right now on Scenic that are vulnerable, may have a similar fate. And as you know, the Fairfax Open Space Committee has identified this property as a priority for preservation as open space. In summary...
Excuse me, sir. Are you still doing your comments or your neighbor's comments?
I have integrated them into our comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. In addition to being a terrible, terrible, in addition to being in-your-face development for many of our residents, this project will negatively affect the environment, specifically the land, water, flora, fauna, and noise level. We would request that you reject it, and thank you for your time.
Lynn McDermott, 53 Ridge, and our neighbor at 51 Ridge, Quinnell Minet, was unable to be here tonight, but she requested that I read her letter. Dear Linda, I have learned about the proposed 5,452-square-foot residential building project with the extraordinarily long driveway over steep terrain that is proposed for 200 Toyon Road. It is my sincere hope that the planning department would not even consider approving such a massive project in that location. I oppose this project for the following reasons. One, it would create a huge scar on an otherwise beautiful wooded hillside, a hillside which is really part of Mount Tam, the most gorgeous and iconic natural feature in Marin County. Two, both the building and the 150-foot driveway would necessitate the destruction of many beautiful mature heritage trees and negatively impact a large swath of habitat for wildlife, including the endangered spotted owl. The scale of this project is out of, three, the scale of this project is out of line with what is appropriate for a town like Fairfax, especially in that location. Four, building a road 150 feet long and 20 feet, 20 or 16 feet wide through steep terrain is asking for trouble, like erosion, and like the big slide that took place last winter right below us on Tamalpais Road. Yes, the owner should be able to build on the property, but he needs to build a structure nearer to the road with a shorter driveway and one that would not negatively impact every single person who looks up at that hillside, not to mention nearby neighbors and those across the canyon who will have to look at this scar in the landscape 24/7. In my opinion, this is exactly the kind of project the planning department was put in place to prevent. It may well be that you all can see, see this for yourselves without the benefit of letters like this. I sincerely hope so. Thanks to you and to all the members on the planning committee for considering my view on this. Unfortunately, I can't be at the meeting tomorrow night, but please feel free to read this letter with my name attached, if that seems appropriate. Respectfully yours, Quinnell Minet, 51 Ridge Road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we're, is it, is it two minutes or three minutes? Three minutes, okay. We're, we're timing you folks, but please step forward.
Hi, my name is Brian McCarthy. My wife, Mary, and I have lived at 183 Toyon Road for about 36 years. Our property joins or touches that fire trail that runs back to the property for the proposed building. And I've walked that trail twice a day for 36 years, so I have good feelings about it. And I'm frankly concerned that the amount of excavation that it will take to access the property and the amount of trees that will have to be taken down will cause, I'm not an environmental scientist, but I think it will cause serious environmental damage to that particular area. I prepared a list of other concerns and have asked my friend and neighbor Bruce to read them to you in order to expedite it, because I might run on for quite a while, so...
That's a good way to do it, sir. Split it up.
Thank you very much.
Number one, continued public access to the Toyon Drive extension that will be used as a driveway to the proposed house. Concern number two from Brian and Mary, making certain that Toyon Drive will be repaved to its original condition after utilities are brought to the proposed building site and that the owner will post a bond that will cover the expense of any further repair work that is done to Toyon Drive by construction vehicles. Number three, parking for construction and contractor vehicles be done on the construction site itself or in any other location that does not restrict the use of Toyon Drive by residents, emergency vehicles, mail, sanitation, recycling, utility vehicles, et cetera. Four, any widening of the Toyon Drive extension and excavation of the hillside and removal of trees be subject to the environmental study to avoid slide damage. And five, any tree removal on the, on the proposed building site to be subject to an environmental report to reduce the possibility of slide damage to the surrounding hillsides. These are our real concerns, and I trust they will be addressed by the town council. Thank you very much.
Your name, sir, for the record?
Bruce McDermott, formerly at 181 Toyon and currently at 53 Ridge Road.
Thank you.
I'm Carl Deal, 156 Toyon Drive, and members of the commission. I just want to support the comments of my, of the previous commentators who are my neighbors. They listed, and the very, very fine staff report was very thorough, so I don't want to add to that or duplicate it. I would like to address one issue that I don't feel is explored adequately, which is that Toyon, that portion of Toyon Drive, where it splits off from Oak, is a privately maintained road. It is not a town-maintained road, and it is not, it was neither designed nor constructed to bear the kind of traffic that we're talking about with this project. We're talking about at least 70, 75, perhaps even more, heavy concrete trucks, plus the removal of well over 1,000 cubic yards of, of soil, of overburden, that will be stripped away from the hillside. And we should have some study as to whether the, the road, it can bear that, and if it can't bear that, the applicant should not only post a bond for damages, but should ensure that the road is adequate to whatever project might be approved in the future. So we have a massive, out-of-scale, out-of-character house here, a massive out-of-scale driveway and massive retaining walls that are going to have a, an enormously detrimental impact on the entire neighborhood, and I urge you to reject this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One question for you. Do, do the surrounding neighbors then maintain that roadway?
We do.
Do the property owners?
We actually just repaved it, what, two years, three and a half years ago, at, at our expense, yeah.
Is it, okay. Thank you.
Pamela Meggs, 310 Cypress. I was noticed, so I'm within the sphere of how far from where he wants to build. I was on the planning commission in 2005. I recused myself. And first I want to say, Linda and, and Ben, fabulous reporting. You have really made clear and strong findings from the general plan. The general plan wasn't done until 2012, and I worked on that for 12 years, so I understand the process of the community, the character, who we are, et cetera. So the findings are strong, not to build this house. And I also was part of the open space committee. I actually initiated it, and there was a lot of conversations going on with the owner, which is sad. It fizzled out. I don't know what happened, but, and also I have to say, I am elected on the Ross Valley sanitary board currently, but I am not here and wearing that hat. I'm the neighbor. So I, I looked up the minutes and it, I haven't changed my mind. It's a proposal for a massive monster mansion, that the project would result in environmental slaughter. I was out there today. I don't understand why anybody would want to build there unless they really did a small house right near the road. And that the roadway extension would cause massive excavation, that the roadway extension may open the area up to subdivision. At that time on the planning commission, there was a lot of discussion around that. I don't know if that's current. The house is just basically too large. It does not fit in the character. The hillside ordinance, God bless Fairfax, that is an amazing ordinance, and it's there for a reason. That's why when you drive into town, you don't see a ton, a million houses stacked. You know, it's, it's, it's that whole feeling of who we are. So that's sort of the same thing I said in 2005. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Warner, and I'm the owner of 181 Toyon Drive and have owned it for 36 years. My concern, as like many of my neighbors and colleagues have said, is that, you know, the road is extremely narrow. We have to maintain it. It's costly to repair it. In some locations, that roadway that's paved is 10 point, 10 feet and 3 inches wide, the pavement, is very narrow, in the narrowest spot. And this is, I lived there since it was a, not a paved road. It is just a very, very poor road. So to have all these trucks going up and down, it would really destroy it. And by the way, 17 feet, I know it's theoretical, but this is probably about 15 feet, that rafter there, the tie rafter. So it's a very massive thing. So obviously, I think this project should be denied. I have no problem with them building some house that is within reason, but I am, am concerned that if you build a massive house, there'll be a lot of traffic, a lot of people potentially could live there at a later date, and the road is way too narrow for that, for more cars. So that is my concern on the size of the house. And, let's see. And also, I think the width that there, was requested or narrowing of it, we have to take in consideration the parking. The parking is very narrow, very, very limited there, and that will be, the little U-turn is used by 181, 179, and 183 all use it as backup guest parking. So that will go away, and that's a concern for me, too. And then the last portion is this paper street item. There's, that is access, public access, that should be maintained for a, access to the open space. There's a trail that's been there for umpteen years, at least 36, and so to pull, you know, not have access to that is clearly wrong. This, this is...
Are you saying the roadway knocks out the trail altogether? The roadway to the house?
The roadway to the house is a paper street that is...
That's actually a trail? The trail you're talking about?
Well, you know, it raises a good point. I don't know where the, if, because there's no markers out there, there's no survey markers, is the street actually aligned with the open space?
That's a good point. Thank you for your comment.
My name is Richard Behrens. I live at 164 Toyon, and like the McCarthys and the Werners, we've been there about 35 years. You know, in life, we make decisions that we regret afterwards, that possibly they were decisions we shouldn't have made. This journey started in August 2002 when the planning commission approved the variance on the town's standard 20-foot road to 14, which is expired. Buying a property that in order to build makes a mockery of the town's plans and regulation blows my mind. They're asking for six discretionary approvals, and there are 10 town plans that have to be overlooked in order to do this project. I wanted to make a comment about the road. Suzanne did. All roads leading to the project will be affected, including Bellinas, Cascade Drive, Laurel, Oak, and our portion of Toyon Road that we spent tens of thousands of dollars repaving three years ago this coming February. The current road between 164, where I live, and 180 has cracks in the road already after three years. This is a hillside road. These are narrow roads. The roadway between 180 and the corner has six cracks on it on the downhill side, and if you go off the road, it's probably a 50% plus road width. So you've already heard about all the trucks coming and going, concrete, the 142 trees have to be taken off the lot. And the town engineer said that a security should be obtained is done on previous large grading projects and guarantees the completion of the work. The security should also guarantee the restoration of the pavement in the existing Toyon Drive that will be cut by the new utility trench work, including sewer, water, and joint utility trench. The repair of the existing street from damage of this project, construction activity must be guaranteed by security. be guaranteed by security. And a hold harmless agreement, which I find interesting, you're talking about approving a project on a non-town-maintained road, what if the road collapses? Who's responsible? Who's going to pay for that? I remember when Cypress went down, it was $250,000 to repair that road. The final sentence of his memo here says, "The street will be greatly affected by all the utility trench and construction traffic." As I stated in the beginning, sometimes we make mistakes. In my opinion, the purchase of the property was probably a mistake and doesn't guarantee the right to develop it, at least at this magnitude. Why should the town grant exceptions to the rules because they purchased something they probably shouldn't have and want to build something that doesn't work for many reasons in the staff's report? Thank you.
Hi. I'm Vincent Adams, and my husband, John Norby, and I live at 179 Toyon. We're the newest members of the community there. And in addition to just letting you know that we agree with everything our neighbors have said here today, I wanted to reiterate the points that are of most concern to us, which have to do with, if any plans go forward, whether they're where the existing plans are, or whether they're moved to where the mailboxes are. And I'm just going to point out, that's right here on this map, that our concerns will still be there for creating a bond measure to make sure that the road gets repaired if it's damaged, making sure that the traffic is uninterrupted on the road. And the most important thing for me personally is making sure that the access to the open space trails are still maintained, because on the, even on that map, it appears that the driveway, the designation of what's driveway starts long before the entrance to the trails that we use. That is, the end of the pavement starts here, and this is the right-of-way for Toyon Drive, and I don't actually know where it ends, but the driveway note starts right here, but our trail access is over here. So, even if you build right here, we'd still have to deal with that issue, we'd still be concerned about that issue. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Stephen Keys at 310 Cypress Drive. Couple of months ago, those of us in Cascade Canyon began to talk about fire safety, wildfire safety. And at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, we asked Ray Moritz about using trails, fire roads, and others to get out in case the cascade, the one road in and out of the canyon, then Cascade Drive was blocked. And he said, there really was only one usable access, and that's basically this road. I don't know whether it's a road or whatever, so he said, that was the only way you could expect to get out of our area if the fire blocked the bottom end of it. So, I don't know what that means for us, for you all, or anything else, but I just wanted to bring that up, that that's a concern for those of us who live in the area. Thank you.
Could someone please turn off that light on the mic? Thank you. It sometimes disrupts the others. Thank you for your comment. We will close the public hearing and bring discussion back to the commission.
Well, actually, a number of the neighbors brought up an issue that I wonder if it could even be done. I mean, normally, in our permits, when we have construction, we do require a bond of the owner to repair damage they do to a Fairfax street, but apparently, this road is privately owned, and I'm wondering if... Privately maintained? Okay, so I'm wondering if the same procedure could be used for that?
We would have to investigate the actual legal procedures. Certainly, I think the intent is, we're reviewing development, and they should be required to address any damages that they create. So, I think conceptually, we would do that in terms of how that works out with respect to city-maintained or privately maintained, town-maintained, rather. We'd look into that.
Okay. Because it's obvious that, you know, if they have to spend hundreds of thousands to maintain the road themselves, and there's damage from, you know, 80 trucks and all the weight, that they shouldn't have to, you know, bear the burden of rebuilding that. So, either the owner of the property should, or they can get a bond to cover it. So, that's kind of my, would like to hear from legal to find out how that would work.
Okay. Well, thank you for all your feedback. I think, you know, when I started to look at this project, I thought, okay, I get the design, the sweeping floor plan, and the great views, and the privacy of this location. So, there are a lot of good points about the design, but this is, I feel that this is the wrong location for this. The fact that the natural topography has to be modified, impacted, altered so much is very telling of why this is not the right place. And fundamentally, it does go against our general plan. I, you know, I started to write down notes as I started to review the staff report, and I ran out of space just in terms of questions I had and conflicts that I believed existed in the design. I'm very concerned about the retaining walls, and when I looked at the elevations from the downhill side, I was not very happy with the massing of, you know, what this looks like from a distance. So, I was really struggling. I'm very much struggling with this project, and the way it is right now, I cannot support it. That's just, you know, my take. I agree with the public comments and everything that's been said with the staff report as well. So, that's where I am right now. I'm not sure, you know, when we were talking about using this as an opportunity to redesign, I think it would be a massive redesign, and it's just, it's unfortunate, you know, I don't know, this is maybe a conversation we can have offline about process for future design reviews, because it does seem, just being on both sides of the fence on projects, it's, it can be very frustrating to pour so much money and time and invest so much in a project that is not going to be successful, just by the time it gets to the design review, you know, part when it comes to us. So, I don't know, that's something maybe we can talk about in the future, because I just, you know, I was looking at all the technical information in the reports, and I just thought, wow, this is a real shame that it went that far down the route. And I, and I'm not, you know, making a judgment call, or it's not an opinion as to why this happened, I'm just saying, maybe there's a discussion or dialogue that can happen there in the future. But, just in terms of where this project stands right now, I cannot support it as is.
I had a question for staff. The applicant representative mentioned the reason that the house was placed where it is placed is because the slope in that location was less than, let's say, closer to Toyon Road. So, my question for staff is, where the road ends now, the improved road, would have a steeper slope? But my question is, looking in that area and then in town in general, you know, do we have examples of houses that are built on steeper slopes than what is in where that house is placed now?
Oh, yes. Yeah, and I talked with the town engineer today, who reminded me about a house on Forest Avenue. It's almost the last house before you get to San Anselmo, that's on a steeper slope, and it was actually built on a slide site. So, with new engineering techniques, you can, you can build on very steep slopes. And there's examples of that type of development throughout town.
So, some of that, like the one you mentioned, is that a newer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, my thing here is, page 11 of the report really kind of summarizes where I'm at. I mean, all the general plan compliance issues that the general plan, you know, was worked on for a decade-plus to come up with these policies, preserving scenic and natural resources, this doesn't do it. Managing future growth while preserving the area's natural resources, this project doesn't do that. Preserve the community, neighborhood and community character. We've heard from the public that this project certainly doesn't seem to do that. And on and on, this whole, you know, all these policies that are in the general plan, and the general plan being our town's kind of constitution, we need to adhere to that. So, as I said earlier, my comment is, this plan seems to do as much as possible to negative the general plan's approach to this type of project, rather than trying to cooperate with it and fall within some reasonable aspect. So, I can't, I can't support it either for that reason. There's just too many negative aspects to it.
Well, I concur with those comments, and I would say that I cannot support the project as well. In general, it, and compliments on the staff report, by the way, it lays out the concerns very well. The, in general, I would say that the house is, as proposed, is excessive in its size. The deck is significantly larger than our entire house, not that that needs to be the comparison, but upper and lower stories of our house, it's just huge. This whole thing is just huge. And placed in a very visible location, and placed in a location in which a very, very long driveway needs to be brought to it over very difficult terrain, which will require a huge amount of cutting and filling, and huge retaining walls to get to it. And then, on top of that, it's at the end of a road that's already difficult to maintain, and in part maintained by the residents of that road, is going to cause further damage. So, it just seems like, in order to be able to look at any development on this property, it seems to me that it would need to be a smaller proposal, and it would need to be much closer to where the developed part of Toyon Road is. And from what we've heard, the, we know that the soil engineering hasn't been done, so that would have to be done, but indications are that that would be a much simpler way to go about developing this property, and with much less visibility from other properties. So, as it's currently proposed, I definitely cannot support it.
I think most of my comments have been echoed by others, and I, when I was at the site, I did meet some of the neighbors, and they gave me some of the same comments. I appreciate the very thorough tree report that was done on the project, but I do have concerns about the amount of trees that need to be removed as part of the project, so I would really like to see if the house could be moved closer to the beginning of Toyon Road to minimize. I've got real concerns about the heights of the retaining walls, if there's something that can be done about that. The access to open space, I think that's a real, an issue that needs more information about. I feel like this design is trying to fight the hillside, where there's opportunities where it can nestle the hillside and blend in more. It just feels like it's kind of just set on the hillside, instead of trying to embrace it. So, that's really all I have to add.
Okay. So, I think, first off, I, like my other commissioners, am not in favor of the proposal, and some of the things that stick out to me are all captured in the open space committee's letter. It's important to me that there be access to the public trail that runs along where this driveway is planned, and I'm kind of opposed to turning that trail into a driveway. The number of trees and the nature of the trees that are planned, you know, that Madron Forest there is just incredible, and I, you know, will argue with my last breath that that Madron Forest needs to be protected as best we can here. The right-of-way and turning that trail into a driveway, as I said, is a problem. All the general plan policies, objectives, and goals that are referenced in the staff report, as well as many others, including the open space and conservation elements that are impacted by this proposal. You know, I'm concerned about the wildlife and vegetation. I personally think that the Napa Falls indigo is in that public trail on the right-of-way before you get to where the house is, but that was many years ago, it may be moving Obviously, the scale issues are serious, especially in terms of our views, and the location obviously provides the best views for the resident of the proposed home in terms of where it's situated on that hillside as it goes out. And you see this beautiful hill on the other side, and what are the, you know, few houses on that other side would then, in turn, be looking at this really big house instead of what they're currently looking at in terms of a beautiful hill? And that strikes me as indicative, yet again, of, you know, an effort to maximize the profit of, you know, building a house with spectacular views while minimizing any attempt to integrate the proposal with the neighborhood and the community and the, you know, and Fairfax. And so, that's, you know, a huge concern to me. I think I echo what the staff report says about the failure to demonstrate that this land doesn't have better options that are more well-suited to all these issues that we've raised. In fact, I think what this proposal is demonstrate that what you guys have put on the table is completely unacceptable, given the height of the retaining walls, the other things that people have talked about. I mean, the height of the retaining walls alone, if we're talking something, approving something that this town has never approved, and we would be setting a precedent that we would then have to follow, I mean, you know, that's sort of not, that's the exact opposite direction that this town would like to go, I think. And, you know, so I think if you put all these things together, and you look at sort of the totality of what might be better integrated, we are talking closer to the road, smaller size, we have to make sure that there's an adequate turnaround for the fire, and I think, you know, there's a lot of these hurdles that you could overcome if you came back with something that was closer to the road and smaller. I think you could come up with a security to ensure that the road wouldn't be impacted, have less excavation, less huge trucks. impacted, have less excavation, less huge trucks, but, yeah, it wouldn't have to be completely different, in my view.
So let me go ahead, because I didn't have a chance to, to weigh in on my opinion of this. To approve this project, we had to make findings for hill-area residential development permit, design review, encroachment and excavation permits, retaining wall height variance, and exception to the 20-foot access road with requirement. And I went through each one of those, and I couldn't make findings for any of those. When I looked at the hill-area residential development permit, it's got to be consistent with the general plan, and we've talked about, you know, as a minimum, several land use goals that it doesn't meet, and, and policies. The site planning preserves identified natural features. Based on soil report findings, the site can be developed without geologic, hydrologic or seismic hazards, and there's been discussion, you know, in the staff report, in that area. Vehicular access and parking are adequate. The proposed development harmonizes with the surrounding residential development, meets the design review criteria, and does not result in the deterioration of significant view corridors, and that's just for the hill-area residential development permit findings. You know, design review, I found that it, in my view, it didn't meet six of those findings. Encroachment and excavation permits, I found that it didn't support that. To give the encroachment permit, for private improvements within the public road easements that are not being used by the public, but right now, that road is used as access for the trails, so I couldn't find that. You know, we have concerns about the 16-foot wide roadway from the town attorney, so issues with that. The excavation permit, the findings there require that the amount of excavation or fill proposed is not more than is required to allow the property, the property owner substantial use of his or her property. Visual and scenic enjoyment of the other, of the area by others would not be adversely affected by the project more than necessary. And the retaining wall height variance, I couldn't make any of the findings we needed for that as well. Because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location of surroundings, the strict application of this title would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by other property owners. But again, that goes back to, you know, are there other areas on that property to cite the home? So, you know, for me, I couldn't make any of the findings for any of the, the permits or variances we needed to make to approve this project.
Yeah, in fact, what you just said is exactly my problem as well, and I had some, you know, we could almost read that into the resolution, what Cindy just said, because that's exactly what I had for additional language in, in, in some parts of the resolution. So, I might as well tell you, so paragraph three, that talks about 1707210, 010B6. What I'd like to do, I mean, I think most of these, most of these comments in the denial resolution are great, just a couple need beefing up with, very much like Cindy was just saying, is why we can't make these findings, so...
Excuse me, could I make some comments before you?
Sure.
Fine-tune the resolution language? Thank you. I, I just want to say that I think Fairfax has a really beautiful general plan, it's a document that intends to, and in fact preserves, the community character, the architectural and historic character of our town, including our open spaces and view corridors. Frankly, I find this project an affront to our general plan, as indicated by the staff report and everyone's comments tonight. It seems clear that the wildlife and vegetation destruction is not fully assessed, and however, most offensive to me is the freeway off-ramp that is proposed to access a house that desecrates the surrounding environment and community. I would like to hear a motion to deny this application, and would suggest that the applicant only return with a proposal that is in keeping with our general plan and its open space element and requirements.
Okay, that's, that's another great comment. So, so on, on paragraph three that talks about, if you don't mind, if it's okay now, 17020010B6, after, after that, I would just like to add some of the language that's in this, that's in that ordinance, so that it's, so after it says, "under the same zone classification," the project doesn't, doesn't meet this requirement because it is out of size and scale with all the other Fairfax properties, and would be a grant of special privilege. So that would be my...
I'm sorry, which section is that?
That's paragraph three, but it discusses 17072010B6.
Can you repeat that?
I'm not sure if I can, but...
I got, "The project doesn't..."
Doesn't meet...
"...this requirement."
This requirement, "because it is out of size and scale with all other Fairfax properties, and would be a grant of special privilege." And then I have just a couple of, actually, three other, on section two of the reso, parts one, two, and three, I just think it would be good to kind of fill in a little more language about, so on one, "the amount of excavation or fill proposed is not more than, than is required to allow the property owner substantial use of his or her property." That another location along Toyon Road would, would preserve the, would prevent excessive fill, and that's the reason. I mean, in other, in other words, after one, two, and three, I think I would like to put a reason for each one of these. So under two, it would say, "the visual and scenic enjoyment of the area by others would not be adversely affected by the project more than necessary. However, here, the way the project is designed to be built creates maximum negative impact on others and the town." And then under three, "natural landscaping will not be removed by the project more than is necessary. However, here, the project maximizes the removal of natural lands, trees, and will destroy the landscaping that exists." Those are my only language changes to the reso.
I have a couple as well. The first is in the title, 17-40 is the application number. Okay, and then, number seven is Policy LU 5.1.2, which we already talked about, and on the top of the last page, it should be, I think, town code 17.072.110E. And I'd like to add, under section two, in the first paragraph, "the planning commission likewise determined that it could not approve the proposed project because it could not make the following findings required," and I would like to add, "under town code section 17.20.080," to allow, blah, blah, blah. That's it.
If there are no further language revisions, can we have that motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution here, that's Resolution 1738 as...
Actually, 1740.
1740.
As modified.
Why do I have Resolution 1738?
No, the resolution... It's Resolution 1738, it's Application 1740.
Yeah, that's what I said, Resolution 1738. To deny, and with the, with the modifications that we just went through, to deny Application 1740 for this development in this location.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay.
We need a second, I'll second.
I'm sorry. Seconded by Commissioner Newton.
Okay.
A roll call vote.
Newton?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Ackerman?
Aye.
Kirilline?
Aye, but may, I add, or afterwards, I guess, I can add a statement?
Oh, you want to make a statement afterwards?
I would just say, I would like, I would encourage the applicant to, to listen to our comments, and maybe come forward with a proposal that might be more appropriate.
Gonzalez Parber?
Aye.
Chair Fragoso?
Aye. Motion carries. There is obviously a 10-day appeal period, and a $400 or $500 fee to the city clerk to file such an appeal, but the motion is, is denied. Application is denied. Thank you, Commissioner Newton. Anyone like a quick break? We still have a number of items to discuss, the next one being, excuse me, the next item being 17 Bolinas Road, in our central commercial zone, a Saki retail sales and tasting room application, if we could have the staff report, please.
Yes. The applicant proposes converting the 482-square-foot first-story commercial space at 17 Bolinas Road into a combination retail sales and tasting room for Saki, that will also provide educational classes to customers about Saki and Japanese culinary and beverage culture. Proposed hours of operation would be from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. daily, with one employee, and from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. with two evening employees. Twice a month during the day, the business plans to hold educational classes about Saki, food pairings with Saki, et cetera. The business will not be open to walk-in customers during these classes. The business would have inside seating for seven customers, partaking in tastings at the counter, wait seating for five, and additional eight seats outside the building. The project requires a conditional use permit because it's combining retail sales with service activities, and it's also proposing an outdoor seating area. There's no reason to expect that the, that including outdoor seating in the approval for the Saki retail tasting bar would have any significant impact, since it will utilize the same outdoor covered entry patio area as the adjacent restaurant, which has been used successfully that way since 1990. Staff met with the police department regarding the proposal, and they have no concerns and do not feel the proposal will have any significant impacts on police department operations. The findings for the approval of the requested conditional use permit can be long, can be made as long as certain conditions are met, and recommended findings and conditions for approval of the proposed use can be found in attached Resolution 17-39, and we're recommending that you approve Application 17-41 by adopting Resolution 1739, setting forth the findings and conditions for the project approval.
Questions of staff?
Okay, I, I just had, just a, a language issue, maybe, under Ross Valley Fire Department, project requires installation of a fire alarm system, right? It's fire alarm system, right? Not four alarm system, okay.
It's a four alarm fire system.
Well, I was, I just want to make sure it's, it isn't that, okay.
So, another typo on the reso, I think the title should be Saki retail sales and Saki tasting business?
Thank you.
Okay. And looking at the plans, just to clarify, there's no internal door between the restaurant and the tasting room, correct?
Not directly from the service area to the other service area. The owner, the applicant pointed out to me that there is a back hallway, because they have a shared bathroom back there, but there's no doorway leading from the seating areas to the other seating areas, yeah.
And then my other question is probably for the applicant, so the seating area outside would be served Saki?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
But double-check with the applicant.
Okay, all right, I'll ask that, because I can't remember if, if the restaurant side has service...
They do.
Outside as well.
Yes, they do, yeah.
I just have a question, I don't know if you can answer this. How many other establishments or restaurants serve alcohol outdoors in Fairfax?
So I know that the restaurant at 31 Bolinas does, I'm trying to think who else has outdoor seating.
Perry's.
Perry's.
But Moss...
Moss Masa?
Yeah, 123 Bolinas has outdoor seating, and they serve alcohol out there. Are you trying to just figure out Bolinas, or...
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, yeah, I'm just mentally trying to compare, you know, the culture of each one.
Yeah, so the two establishments that have outdoors, the three establishments that have outdoor seating all serve alcohol outside, on Bolinas Road, and then there's a number of them on, on Broadway, that have outdoor seating, that serve alcohol outside, yeah. All right, thanks. 123 Bolinas is the wine bar, the Mexican, I shouldn't say Mexican, whatever, is it Moss Masa? I always forget the name, Moss Masa, and then the...
Perry's Bar.
Right.
And the...
The sushi restaurant, which I've forgotten the name.
The brew pub, Iron Springs.
Oh, yeah.
Would be, yeah, they also have an outdoor seating.
And didn't we approve alcohol at the barbecue joint?
You mean the station?
Yeah.
I have, I have a question for you, Linda, I, I wasn't sure, in looking at the plans, if, there's the section that they're remodeling, and there's the section they crossed off, they're doing nothing to, is that the Japanese restaurant, or is that half, I couldn't tell if it was half of the space?
No, that's the...
Or actually the Japanese restaurant, because it didn't have the layout, and it was a little hard to tell, thank you.
It's the restaurant, yeah.
Can you, can you remind me how many seats are outside of, on the Japanese restaurant, on the port?
Oh, boy.
I thought there were only four.
No, there's, three tables of four. They have, they're like, long tables that abut the barrier between the sidewalk, and they can fit four people. Yeah, it's a, it's a wider space, so it has more room than the frontage of the Saki tasting establishment.
So on the, on the floor plan, proposed T1, and kind of comparing that to the photograph that was supplied, the eight-by-ten color glossy, are, is there, so on, the doors are going to change from a double door to a single door, right? And then on, on... And then on the red carpet area in the picture, is that where the two round tables with four seats will go on either side of the door? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then I'll have some questions for the applicant, thanks.
Okay.
Linda, what is the width of that now single door? Is that three feet? Thirty-six? Well, I can ask the applicant why they're changing that. It seems like two doors are more accessible.
It's three feet.
I think that's shy of disabled requirements for a single door.
I believe you're correct, yeah, I think it needs to be four.
And they would do better to leave it at two, but that's something for the applicant to talk about. Do commissioners have any other questions of staff or should we bring up the applicant? Okay. Would you like to present your application, please? State your name, hit the button so you get a red light.
Great, hello, my name is Scott. I'm the owner and operator of Village Saki right now and the applicant for seventeen Bolinas Road. I want to thank staff and the commission for reviewing this and I've already written a couple of notes. I could address some of the questions I heard or wait to hear them again.
Okay, well, one, I've already brought this up and that is that the, you know, the area depicted by the red carpet in this photograph, see, and I know I've been there, is fairly narrow and I'm just wondering how you're going to get. So are these two tables with four seats kind of smaller tables than the norm? Or what are they exactly?
Yeah, outside of seventeen, it would be two round tables smaller than the norm because it's not for a meal. It would be a much smaller, it's a smaller space, as you pointed out. And I believe, I have it here, but I believe the picture shows two round tables and it should be, yeah, much smaller than what's in front of seventeen, nineteen.
Okay, I mean, I'm just concerned that people sitting there might actually, you know, encroach out into the sidewalk. That was my concern with that.
That makes sense, there's two things. I think there's quite a bit of space, I believe it's like seven or more feet if you measure it, I forget. But the other feature that's not on that design that needs to come to you guys for plan review is changing the, if you look at the space at nineteen, there's the kind of like a little railing fronting that I think we want to match that same railing, same material, same colors, with an opening to get through the center to the doorway. And that didn't get included in this and we'll have to come to you as a separate packet, but for the same reason, to give it some separation and a little bit of a barrier.
So along those, so the question of the door for staff, is the door then ADA accessible with the single door?
The applicant is probably familiar because he just did a recent remodel, but I believe thirty-six inches clear satisfies handicapped accessibility requirements. In any event, it's a building code compliance item, so if it has to move a couple inches wider, I'm sure they would.
So as far as what the applicant just said about coming to put kind of a similar, that's not fencing, but what you have at the restaurant and carrying that to the Saki tasting room, that's not a part of these plans, that wouldn't just come to us by themselves. So how, if he has that, should that be incorporated in what we're doing tonight or no?
So, I believe that's going to be a requirement of the health department and ABC and we wouldn't necessarily bring the barrier back to you. Is that what your question is? Because I think that's going to be required by them and we haven't always, you know, if he was going to do something different than what is already found along the front of the building, like if he was going to try to put in planters or something, we would have told him that he has to include it in this, but he's just matching, it's all one building, the same thing that you find on the other side, changing the configuration slightly to make it more workable. And just, I just scaled it and actually it's deeper than it looks in the photo. There's, it's eight feet wide on the on the northern side of that opening and it narrows to six feet. So it's actually pretty deep. It's deeper than it looks in the photograph.
So then you would be serving outside, correct? Or they would get their Saki inside and then bring it out? How do you plan?
We'd be serving outside.
Okay, and then the restaurant serves meals and refreshments out there as well? Okay.
Yeah, that's why my main concern with the project is is that there's, it's narrow and there's no separation to the sidewalk. So this idea of a railing similar in design to the other one, I mean, I could almost suggest it could be a condition.
You can go ahead and include it because I'm fair, we went through this with the Punjab, Dunja Biredo place when they wanted to have the outdoor place. It wasn't even near a sidewalk, it was a central courtyard and it was a requirement of either the ABC or the health department that it has to be separated. You can't have it open to the public sidewalk.
And they just have planters, don't they?
Yeah, they have planters, mhm. So they're allowed to have an access path to the door, but they do have to have a separation so that, yeah.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Could you tell me how this works again? What hours is it open and when do you have just a private by reservation? And when can people come and go?
Yeah, so ideally daily it'll be open in the daytime from, I believe it's down there, ten to four and that's just open to the public with closing periodically for scheduled classes. So basically a one-time event during the day and during that time it wouldn't be open to the public. The four to five PM closure is a goal. I think Linda included a line that said there's some flexibility to that. There may be a time we decide that we don't need that closure in between the day and evening service and then back open five to ten with, and so.
How late is the Japanese restaurant open?
Five to ten daily. And on Sundays, we close at nine, but that's more of a by choice because it usually gets quiet.
That's what I was thinking too. Also, I believe the hours in the staff report are eleven to four and five to ten.
That sounds right, I probably misspoke there.
I don't know, I have some concerns about the eleven to four just for drinking. It's different if you're having food, but I'll let that go for now.
I'll let it go, I was just going to ask something about the lighting, but since we're really, we're looking at a use permit here, so it's really isn't the, we're not focusing on the building so much, so.
And I just wanted to remind you guys that the reason it's requiring a use permit is because he's combining two different uses. If it was strictly retail, it would be permitted or if it was strictly a bar, it would be permitted because bars are allowed in the CC zone.
Do we have a limit of the number of bars that are allowed in town or is it just a free-for-all?
I think the ABC has limits and they have a special permit process if there's an over-concentration. But when I talked to the ABC, they said that this isn't a problem for this area of Fairfax for this type of use. So they're fully prepared to approve it and the police chief checked with him and he has the final say if there is some kind of over-concentration and he doesn't have a problem with it, so.
I have a question, not so much about compliance and rules, but the products that you're going to be selling and serving. So, you know, I'm trying to think, how many different brands of Saki can you get and do they all come from Japan?
Yeah, yeah, there's, I think about twelve hundred Saki breweries in Japan alone and each of them have several items. So most of our products are going to be Japanese. We do, right now I don't think we have any domestics, but we've dealt with some domestics and then there would also be, I don't know if you guys have been, there's a place in Santa Fe. It's a French restaurant with a little shop next door that has French specialty items. It'll kind of hopefully take some of that concept where some specialty teas and other items and just a nice little spot for that. It's, you know, three hundred and eighty-two square feet, there's not a ton of space, but just to kind of be Saki-centric, yeah.
Would you also be serving teas or just Saki?
Most, well, I'm sure would have some sort of green tea, I think, just to provide that. But yeah, tea, Saki, even juice, soda, that type of stuff.
Are you thinking about perhaps expanding your restaurant business down the road if this is popular and then you could combine the two places?
Again, with it being only three hundred and eighty-two square feet and with the structure of the building, I think just this is kind of the goal for the use of the space, yeah. And hopefully it works as well as we planned.
The building looks larger from the outside than what it seems to come down to in the square footage of your plan. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing and so is there someone from the audience who would like to speak on this item? No, nobody's standing up, okay. Well, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to discussion amongst commissioners.
Okay, the only comment I make is that the police would say anything, but for them to say it won't impact police department operations seems to me a strange, a strange kind of thing. I mean, it's very general, I mean, so they had no specific issues with this project at all. Okay, okay, very good.
And there would be no music?
That was not proposed as a part of the application.
I know, but that's never the last word.
Okay, I have, assuming we get to the reso at some point, I have a specific language idea here for the reso. So on paragraph, under conditions of approval, paragraph, condition number two, it says if repeated noise complaints are received that relate to outdoor service, et cetera. I would like to add the words and other. So it's just if repeated noise and other complaints are received. Or other, or other, that's fine. Just because it's possible that we can have complaints other than noise, you know, okay.
I can support this application.
So can I.
Simple.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's a nice marriage of the two spaces. And I forgot to ask, when are you opening?
No, I have no issues and it seems like a great expansion to your business.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it also, actually, it'll be interesting. I'm a little curious about the classes you're going to hold, but I think, you know, that's probably a good idea, get people culinary education. So I have no problems with this project at all, really.
I see that there is new lighting, new signs and planters that are proposed. Would those, are those just approved by staff? Do they have to come to the commission? And if there's planters, wouldn't that, would that cut down on the space if they're putting railing out there?
Can you tell me what page you're on in the plans?
Conditions of approval, number four.
That's one of our standard conditions that we put in. So if they make any significant changes, they need to get it approved, right? Yeah.
Is there a motion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number seventeen dash thirty-nine with the two small language changes that were made, adding the word tasting business to the title and or other to condition number two after noise.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, good luck with your business. There is a ten day appeal period if someone should object and a four or five hundred dollar fee with the clerk, but good luck with your business. Our next item is seven Olima Road, single-family residence and accessory dwelling unit, design review and excavation permits. Can we have the staff report?
The applicant's are proposing a two thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight square foot, one-story, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom, single-family residence with a six hundred and seventy-five square foot attached one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit and an attached five hundred and ninety-one square foot garage. And one of the commissioners questioned why I indicated there were three bedrooms, so I'll just explain it. The study has a closet and any room that has a closet, we have to consider a bedroom because it could potentially be used that way. But that's why there's a difference if you just count bedrooms and my staff report says three, okay. The applicant's original submittal maintained only a six-foot side setback from the eastern side property line. Additionally, the plans appeared to indicate that there was going to be some grading extending into the oak grove at the rear southeastern corner of the site and there was no paved connection planned along the property frontage where pedestrians currently cut through from the Olima Road to connect to the formalized pedestrian bicycle path that runs past the library. But the staff met with the applicant and they were very agreeable to making some changes that we recommended. They increased the setback between the building and the eastern side property line from six to nine feet so that an adequate landscaping buffer and fence could be installed. They provided details of the fence next to the path to clarify its design features, it's going to be redwood. They clarified that there would be no grading or tree removal within the drip line of the Grove of Oaks at the rear southwest corner of the site. They agreed to preserve the majority of the redwoods at the front of the site and they agreed to provide a connecting public sidewalk from the pedestrian bike path to their driveway and then onto Olima Road. So the project requires a design review permit and an excavation permit. The house incorporates board and baton siding with covered front and rear entry porches reminiscent of the craftsman-style residences and older farmhouses found throughout the neighborhood and town. Construction of the residential structure will require the removal of three oak trees, two olive trees, one redwood tree and three small fruit trees. The staff report incorrectly says the removal of one olive tree, but there are actually two being removed in the driveway area or one in the driveway, one at the rear. two being removed in the driveway area, or one in the driveway, one at the rear. Residences in the immediate neighborhood on lots of similar sizes range in size from a 1,519-square-foot, four-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence on a 14,000-square-foot property, to two residences that together have a total living space square footage of 3,592 square feet on a 14,408-square-foot property. This project site is almost twice as large as the previously mentioned properties. The underlying zoning allows two living units, it's our duplex zone. Therefore, the proposed 3,513-square-foot, single-family residence and accessory dwelling unit are not out of scale or character with the surrounding neighborhood or the site. The project will require the excavation and fill of 350 cubic yards of material, and that's because, when they did the soils report, they discovered that there were areas of fill, and the weak unconsolidated nature of the fill and the natural soils underneath it require that the site be regraded and compacted, consistent with the soils engineer's requirements. So the soils report recommends, and the town engineer agrees, that the potential future distress to the structure, the garage slab, would be significantly reduced by removing the fill and weak natural soils and recompacting them. And therefore, the excavation that they're proposing is the minimum that's required to develop the site. So we're recommending that you approve application 1742 by adopting resolution 1740, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And we do have one change we would like to make to the resolution on page three. The applicants requested a modification to condition, well, we modified conditions H and I because they were a little bit redundant, and the change I put in front of you and marked in red, can you guys find that?
Focus.
Yeah. So we had, we had included a condition that required the arborist to be on-site during all the grading and everything, and they requested that we modify that, so that the arborist be on-site when the protection for the trees is put in, and they want, their arborist will photograph the protection and provide a letter indicating that their recommendations have been met, and then he will make periodic visits to the site, but he won't actually stand there during the grading. The engineer will be there during the grading, the geotechnical engineer, so that's the only change.
Linda, I have a question for you. You indicated that they are taking out fill and bringing new fill in to compact it, and yet...
Well, no, let me, let me correct that. I may have said that, but we have since determined that we were very sensitive to the fact that off-haul impacts the roads, and so we checked with their engineer, and there is a way for them to keep the fill on the site and recompact it, so they're not going to have, am I correct about this?
Okay.
Yeah, they're not going to have to haul in material.
That's what I was going to say.
They're just going to have to restabilize what's there.
Because page six of the geotech report, the very last sentence says, "We understand you would rather deepen foundation elements than remove, so, than remove and replace the materials as properly compacted fill." And so, the balance of the report is oriented in that way.
Right, and, yes.
So that, that is correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the engineer will be there during the grading to make sure it's all done in the right way.
I had one other question for you. There's a, so there's a driveway at Olima, and then there's one also on, on the pathway to the library, or just on Olima Road?
No, no, they just have one driveway from Olima Road to the site.
I noticed there's a, I don't know what it is, it looks like a culvert or a ditch right on Olima Road. Would that be then reconstructed and replaced with the roadway, the driveway over that?
Yes, and the town engineer has reviewed that whole situation, and so, it's, it's up to his specifications for the size of the culvert and the amount of drainage that's going to come through there.
We know Wazinski is, is very good at that.
Very thorough.
There, I recall there used to be kind of a community garden in this area. Is this, is this the site of that garden?
No, the community garden is still there. It's behind the library, so it's between this site and the library, kind of down by the creek.
Right, okay.
It's still there.
I, I did see the story polls, it just seems kind of a massive project. Are they maybe too high than, than they should be, or?
Um, no, the house is going to be 20 feet tall, but it is one-story, so it's under your height limit. And it does have varied roof lines, and it kind of steps down a slight slope, so, and it is two units, so.
It's also noted that the community garden is located to the south, so in terms of sun impacts, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, this project wouldn't affect it.
Okay, yeah, thanks, that's good.
And there's, there's quite a few oak trees between the house and the community garden, so if any shading is occurring, I used to have a garden there, so it comes from the oak trees, really.
Linda, can you please clarify, when you were mentioning the, the trees that were going to be removed? I thought I saw on the plan there's some oak trees proposed to be removed, is that, I don't remember you mentioning those.
It's coming out.
If you're, if you're standing at the gate on Olima, looking straight in, there's a couple of small oak trees, but then there's a giant oak tree straight ahead that looks like it could be close to the front porch entry, is that one coming out?
That was what, that was one, because it looked like on the plans, and, and I didn't see there was any reports for the, for the, and I'm also concerned about the oak trees on the adjacent.
One of the oak trees proposed removal is to the right side of the entry, the proposed entry driveway, and there was some discussion about the need to do that, and it was concluded that, in order to make the circulation work for the proposed parking areas and the turnarounds, you know, that's one of the ones that would be removed.
That's too bad, it's a magnificent oak.
So when I looked, and that was one of the questions that I had, when I look at the staff report, the staff report talks about, it counts eight trees to be removed, but then it says it's a total of five, the bottom of page three. But when you look at the plans, there were actually, I believe, 10 trees identified to be removed, and I think the difference was a pine tree and the olive, and I think Laura, Linda mentioned the additional olive, but we had, I counted 10 on the plans.
Yeah, so it is 10. 10 are coming out, and in the driveway, there's a pine coming out, an olive, an oak, and a redwood in the driveway area. Then there's an oak coming out near the back, where are we, we're north of?
At the corner.
Yeah, the southeast corner of the house, and then three fruit trees in the, kind of the middle area. But the majority of the trees are being retained.
Okay, also, I noticed that there's some oak trees that are on the, the public, near the public pathway, kind of like on the southeast corner of the house. So I just wanted to know, was, was the impact to those trees studied at all?
To our knowledge, there's no regrading nor modifications proposed by this project that would affect those. So, yeah, those being over on the library side of the property, in addition to the rather extensive grove, which we clarified with the applicant, would be left alone except to remove the ivy, but in terms of regrading and things like that. So that's a rather salutary proposal, you know, to take a large area of the site, and as we know with mature oak trees, you pretty much want to just leave that area alone, and that's what they're proposing to do.
So, Linda, some typos clarification. Staff report, page four, first sentence of the second paragraph. It says, "Corner of the lost," I think that should be corner of the lot, and then, or maybe not. And then, page four, third sentence.
That starts with staff? That sentence, the third sentence of the second paragraph? Is that what you just said?
Page four, third sentence, I think it's of the second paragraph, says additionally, "33 bay laurels are proposed to wood screen the eastern side of the residence."
Yeah, it should just be wood.
Proposed that wood screen?
Yes.
Okay. And then I had questions on the window framing. It talks about bronzed aluminum, so that's just the mullions?
I believe that's correct, but I would ask the applicant's that.
Okay, okay, then I will ask, and then it would just, it would have wood trim, probably, around, but I'll ask that question.
That's what the drawings seem to indicate.
Okay, I'll ask that of the applicant. And then the last question relates to the ADU unit. So clarify for me the parking requirement for that.
Well, the new state law says there is no parking required because it's within a half a mile of a bus stop.
Right, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, that's what I thought when I looked at that, and then I was just wondering, and I'll ask the applicant that, if, if they were looking to, as part of that driveway area in front, to allow a car to park there. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Linda, I have a question. This, I don't know if this is a typo, I don't think it is, but what is a volunteer redwood tree? I just, I'd like to know, just it's...
They just, they weren't planted, they sprung up.
They're just kind of like the babies that, that the mother...
Naturally colonized.
Right.
We like volunteers if they're in the right location, the right species, because they've adapted to the site, so you're not guessing whether they'll survive. You can look at their condition and say, you know, if they're in good shape...
It's going to make it.
As long as you don't do something dumb to the roots or something like that, they'll carry on, and you've, you've picked up 20 years of natural growth there.
Okay.
Does the volunteer get to stay?
I'm not sure which volunteer we were referring to, but there, with the exception of the two that are proposed for removal, the remainder would be.
Are we ready to hear the applicant, or?
Well, I had, I had a question. Okay, so there's 33 bay laurels are proposed that would screen the east side of the residence from the public pathway. I thought, you know, in past, I'm not, I'm not any, by any means a tree expert, but I thought bay laurels were kind of not, not a great idea because of the fire hazard, and we'll get, we'll get to the applicant on this one? Okay.
It's probably a different type of laurel than we're thinking of.
Oh, maybe so, okay.
Just a comment on the tree issues. You know, there's been discussion of folding the tree committee's work into the planning commission's work, and, you know, I for one feel that it really does need to be separate, although I, you know, the, the difficulties of deciding on something when you don't know or have all the detail about the repercussions to the trees from our end, and likewise, from the tree committee's side of things, them not necessarily knowing where we're coming from can be, probably put pressure on them as well. So, you know, Ben, I'm just throwing this out there as something for you to ponder, because I personally don't like the idea of combining the two, but I do understand the sort of unknowns and different questions, like us looking at these trees and kind of specific questions that come up in our heads when, really, at this point, it's the tree committee's bailiwick.
And along those lines, I had a discussion with Linda on that same topic, so I was thinking that when we have our workshop and we talk, maybe processes, we would talk about, you know, is it tree committee then planning, or planning then tree, and maybe just kind of relook that whole, that whole process piece.
Regardless of the outcome of those discussions, and I agree that that is certainly a topic that we should explore, I've already talked to the town arborist about the possibility of doing a training similar to the one we conducted for the tree committee a couple months ago, and for this commission, and he's agreed to do so, so we will be scheduling that to help the ongoing education, but it, it's an interesting topic.
And actually, while we're on that topic, I want to remind commissioners that we have had one commissioner who has been on the tree committee forever, and it would be good to find someone to...
To relieve her.
But, but that's a discussion for another time. I just want to put that out there. Are we ready for the applicant's presentation? State your name.
Hello, I'm Ray Bukowski, longtime Fairfax resident, owner of the property, and I used to be on the design review board before they merged, the planning commission then. We've worked with the staff very closely and very hard to make sure we've done all of their requests to make a good project, and I'd like to introduce Jared Polsky, our architect, to talk in detail about the plans. Good evening, my name is Jared Polsky. We're the architects for this project. I own a 10-person architecture firm in Larkspur. We've been there since 1981, and I'm also here with Pete Peterson, our landscape architect. By the way, just to answer the, the, the window question, if I may. Most of the wood windows that we use throughout the county, we, our clients like them clad, they're clad in aluminum on the outside, and they're a wood window, and you can choose whatever color you want for the aluminum cladding. In this case, we've chosen a dark bronze. It'll look like a black window or a steel window, which you'd see in a typical farmhouse aesthetic. We were actually tasked to design a one-story house in a roughly what we would call modern farmhouse style, which is very popular these days, with painted board and batten siding, steeply pitched and varied roof forms, mostly gables at a 10 and 12 slope, which is a real modern farmhouse aesthetic, with a few shed roofs, dark composition shingle roof, and we've, and dark clad windows and doors. We wanted to create an entry court, entry porch at the front towards the street, and then a large covered private terrace at the back, where all the main rooms of the house would flow out onto the terrace, and then the terrace would flow out onto the, the private yard, the rear yard, and also, all those main rooms and the terrace face south to get adequate light and some light, take advantage of the site. The house itself, as Linda said, is about 2,800 feet, and the rental unit will be just under 700 feet, 675, and the garage is a 592-square-foot garage. It's a relatively flat site, have you seen, and it falls off to the west. Our first design showed a six-foot side yard setback and a nine-foot side yard setback on the west side. The matade is combined, they have to be 15 feet. When Mr. Burdo came aboard, he suggested that we increase the side yard setback at the east and shift the living room farther away from the west property line, giving more planting space, and I think more importantly, giving some sense of space between the house and the bike path, and then the library. So we took a slice out of the middle of the house and just slid it over, and I think it, it worked well, and I think it was a good suggestion. We have a few 3D projections, if you'd like to see them. I'll just hand them out. Usually, we staple them up in the boards or project them, but there, there are three different versions, four different versions, you know, we can look, our software is Resident You know, you, we can look, our software is Resident 3D, so we can fly around and look at it inside and outside. And we've chosen a few views just to explain the house a little better. I want to thank staff, by the way, for, for clear guidance. It was really a pleasure working with Linda throughout the process. And I'm happy to answer any architectural questions you might have. And Pete's here to answer any landscape questions you might have. So I hope that's informative.
May I ask a question of the landscape architect? Okay, so...
Pete Peterson, landscape architect.
Yeah. Well, my question was regarding that, that southwest, or is it southeast corner where that oak tree proposed to be removed? It looked like...
At, at the entry court?
No. Well, we'll go to there.
No, the rear.
The, of the, the back of the house.
Back of the house.
But towards the, towards the, the public, towards the public pathway.
Right. Got it.
It looked like there's like, I don't know, there's... I noticed though, there's like a patio where there's something in the back, and you're like proposing to put some trees in that, and I just wondered why you were...
Oh, right, just right off the bedroom?
Yeah. I just wondered why you were proposing to put trees that you're like kind of getting rid of a tree, and then you're putting in two trees.
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a south-facing exposure with a window with no overhang. So passive solar suggested we might get something up to put some shade on that part of the building. Wintertime, deciduous, open, should be just fine. So it, it actually, with, with a house like this, it actually nestles the house into the site when you put trees close to it. It, it gives it scale, and it, it helps the building get to the ground if that's, it's sort of an aesthetic call. And that's, that's why we, we've put them where we've, we have them, is to put some scale close to the house.
Yeah, but I just, I'd have concerns when it's an oak tree that you're trying to, I just wonder if there's any way we could try to save that tree.
This, oh, this, the, the small one with the X in it?
Yeah.
There's a big one that we are saving.
Right, right. But the one, the other one that has the X in it?
Right. That, that one there, yeah. That, it, because of the proximity to the, because we, proximity to the retaining wall that runs along that portion of the site.
Okay. What, what is, what's that retaining wall to?
It's a bulkhead. It holds the soil back. So we can...
For the grade, for the, to keep the tree.
For the home.
Okay.
And we need to get around the home. And that's, that's why that, that one was done that way. We weren't gunning for the, the tree. This is just the way the site, the site plan evolved.
Other than that, I don't, I have any questions, more questions at the moment.
Oh, that, the bay laurel, it, it isn't a bay laurel. These are Grecian laurels. They have, they're much, they're actually the ones you cook with rather than the, well, I guess you can cook with a California one. It's just really stout. So they're, they're very well-mannered, they're slower growing, and, and they, they have a, a more round leaf, and they're just a, they're a much, much better well-mannered tree for a large sort of hedge treatment. They branch low, and they work really well as a large hedge.
Okay, that, I mean, one of the discussions we've had about, you know, laurel bay trees...
Oh, yeah. I'm preaching to the choir on that one.
Is the fire hazard, so is this tree not so susceptible to that?
That's exactly right. It doesn't have the, the heavy exfoliation that they go through. They drop so much, and they're, they're not as oily as the native ones either.
Okay, okay. Thanks for that. I needed to understand that.
You bet. Any other questions? Just, I'll be, I'm not going far.
I have questions about the, the house itself, so. So I can, I can see that you're, it looks to me anyway, that you're going for kind of a spacious, open feeling inside because it's, it's pretty large. You've got the, the family room and the living room, dining room, breakfast room, an open kitchen, all in kind of one big suite.
Right. We have a relatively small, formal area of small dining and sort of a den, living room, but a good-sized family, family area.
Uh-huh. Just in terms of practicality, I, it looks like there's a lot of hallway, which, you know, takes up space in the house. So just, just the way it's organized, the good bit of space is taken up with, with hallway that's narrow enough that there's not going to be much else there except the hallway. So that was just a, a comment I had. And I also was noting that you've got three baths, or, or two and a half baths, I guess. But one of the baths is the master bath, which is off the master bedroom, and the other one is bath two, which is off of bedroom two. So for all the people who could sit in the common area, guests who would come over or whatever, unless they went through those bedrooms, the only bathroom they would have available would be that one that was called the powder room.
That's right.
So it's just a small, smallish, you know, I mean, that's, that's just a, this one small bathroom for the entire house, except the ones that are kind of at the back of the bedroom.
That are on suites, right.
This is, well, this one is part of the unit. This is part of the, this is the, that's the separate unit. Right, and I'm correct about that, right?
You're right.
Bath three is really, would be, you, you would expect that that door would be closed between the hall and that second unit, and it would be separate.
That's right. The choice was made that, that you'd have two en suites and a powder room, and that's, that's how the house has been designed. That's right. And the, the idea of the house is to sort of wrap its outdoor space, so that's, that's why it's stretched around. It's a one-story house, so you, you want to stretch it around that rear courtyard and have the main rooms, the, the office, the study, the master bedroom, the, the formal rooms, and the, the dining, the breakfast room, and the family room, all look out to the, to the yard, to the rear. That's why it's stretched out in that sort of shape.
I had a question for the applicant relating to the accessory dwelling unit. We talked briefly that because it's close to a bus stop, there's no parking requirement?
We have parking.
But that was the question that I had. Would you be allowing them to come in and park in the open?
To the right.
Right by the unit? All right.
And that's, you see how the driveway sort of bears off to the right? That, that's the guest parking, or the rental unit parking.
Can I have a follow-up on that? I, I live in this neighborhood, just down the road, and I use that, that intersection's actually pretty, pretty, is well-used, I would say. And the driveway is right there. I don't know, my husband and I were walking the other day, and he noticed, he was, he was, he was concerned about that, you know, cars, you know, dropping, backing up there could cause a problem, not being, and there's, there's kind of a curve there. It might be a little bit of a blind corner. So I'm just wanting to see how you thought of...
We thought of this, a backup space, so nobody's backing out onto the driveway. You, you can turn around on site and, and front out.
Can that be made a requirement? That they can't back out of that driveway? Be a condition?
As, as a practical matter on a residence, pretty tough to enforce. I mean, that was one of the, that was one of the, the things when we were looking at what trees they were proposing to remove is to make sure that they had sufficient... I mean, it's a practical matter also. If you, as a, a driver, have a choice between backing out and driving out, you're going to drive out every time. So I, it's one of those things where probably the regular users and residents, they'll be able to maneuver around the driveway or park, and they'll be driving in and out. But, yeah, we are aware that that's, there's a lot of activity at that intersection. Pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists using a Lima, surfer, you know, it, it is a lot of activity there, so, yeah.
Perhaps, have, have you considered the mirrors as you're coming out, that people could see back down Olima before they pull out?
That's a good idea, because it is narrow there. But we were, when we started designing, the first thing we did is, can we, can we turn around and get, and front out? And that's why, that's why there's this large parking area. But it's a good idea. I think we should have a mirror there.
And I guess, Ben, that that highlights for me the push and pull between, you know, making a decision about a proposal that is contingent upon the tree committee approving the removal of trees with the understanding of where, you know, and the pressure on them if everything is approved. And one of the things that you have to make sure is that there's enough room for the drive. And so, anyway, that's my thought.
Well, I just want to ask whether the applicant, there's a suggested condition on page four of the staff report that, that could be included, and I'm inclined to include it, in that the landscaping plan be revised to incorporate the use of a higher percentage of, of native California species. Is, so is that something that you would be amenable to if we had that as a condition?
Absolutely not. No, I'm kidding. No, of cour, of course, of course, we'll do that.
Okay, thanks.
Well, my question, though, on that is, what are we looking at when we look at requiring that? I mean, he's got fruit trees. We like fruit trees.
We like fruit trees.
So, I mean, the only thing, when you've got magnolias in the front, but, you know, I had looked at that and wondered about that, but, you know, when you look at the landscaping, I don't know that there's an issue with that. At least on this one.
Well, then, then I don't know why that, that comment is made.
Well, I just made it because there's been a big push in past years to push natives. But my point that I was kind of, I wanted to remind you that you're often concerned about that, but this is an area of town that's not next to open space, it's not next to areas that are strictly vegetated with natives. And so I, I don't feel that it's important, I don't feel that it was important enough to make it a condition myself, but I just wanted to bring, have you talk about it.
Well, that's, that's what we're doing. Of course, he wouldn't, I guess he wouldn't want native California bay trees because they're, they're not what you want, right?
Right. Once you open that gateway, you're into other things. It's really kind of a suburban setting, and we're using low water use things and, and simple palette right now, so an eventual owner might be able to build upon that. And so it's, it's a pretty subdued plant palette right now. But it's trying to take care of privacy concerns and, and just the overall feel of how the home is nestled. So we don't have a problem, I mean, the, going with, you know, a native kerex in the, in our Nomo lawn area, which is a low-water-using lawn. We have some things in the back. We're, we're certainly fine with tweaking those to a more native approach, a manzanita or something like that, because we really don't have the, the fire, we're not an Awui, so we can, we can be, we can use a lot of things that they don't like in the fire zones. So that, that's, that's all fine. We'd be delighted to accommodate that.
Okay, thanks.
Just for curiosity, what is your, your approach to the lawn to keep it low water usage?
It's a, it's a Nomo kerex panza, which is a, or a Nomo fescue. They do a blend of grasses. That's, that's the lawn that kind of grows up and kind of lays down and relaxes and, and stays green with minimal water. It'll be a subterranean irrigation system, so we won't be throwing water around. So it's, it's, it's a, it's very much a, a soft look. It's not manicured. It's a soft look. And that, that dovetails nicely with natives. Thank you.
Can you, well, I don't know who would answer this question, but can you tell me what you're proposing in terms of water capture, gray water systems, water conservation, tankless water heaters?
I, I can talk about the, the storm drainage and the stormwater treatment and how we're handling the water that's moving off the site. We aren't doing a water capture system. We're, we're doing typical erosion control measures that, that slow the water down. We, we go to splash block and, and disperse it on the site. As far as tankless water heaters, that's usually doesn't dealt with at this level. That's usually a building permit issue, and it's at the pollution of the, of the builder.
Municipal has requirements for gray water?
They, oh, the gray water, right. The dispersal in the house, and we deal with that at, at the building permit stage. And yeah, your washer, dryer, your, your, is dispersed out into the garden. And yeah, we'll, we have, we'll have bubble ups. It'll be a downslope in that area down, that will nurture those trees that run along the property line there. That's a requirement, so.
Would, I know it happens at a building level, but if we don't ask about it now, it, does it come up at that building level on...
It, it does, though.
On the tankless water heaters?
Well, the tankless, I don't know about that so much. That's not really a, a, a water thing. That's, that's an energy thing.
Well, that's, well, that's a separate, separate issue, but just efficient, efficient appliances.
Efficiency, right. Thank you.
I have a question for the architect regarding the garage. I just noticed that you have a really big window above the garage doors. Is that natural light for the garage, or is that for like a storage space above?
Oh, oh, there's no, it's not for storage space above.
So it's just for the garage?
It's for the garage, and it's for the facade. I mean, it looks like a big blank triangle.
Yeah.
I think we want to have something that says, you know, looks better. It's, it, there's no storage.
Is, okay. Is that the highest point of the building?
Well, it's the highest point, except as the grade falls off, there's some areas that are actually higher above grain, because the grade's lower.
Right. Okay. All right.
Looks like we're closing the public hearing unless you guys have any additional questions for the applicant, and we can discuss it amongst ourselves. Are we ready for... Oh, I, I didn't ask. Everyone seemed to be together. Does anyone else have a co, a comment? All right, thank you. It's the wish of the commission.
Well, I think, I, you know, that little bit of neighborhood there could use a little upgrade, and I think this project helps to do that. You know, I mean, you, you guys are across the street from this Tenno Lima, which is, you know, not the most beautiful thing at the moment, and there's, you know, wood, wood production going on over there and stuff. So I think that I could approve this project just from a standpoint of it's a great upgrade to the area there. The traffic concern, though, is, is my concern as well. I frequent that, that corner too. You know, the way it comes, kind of suddenly comes to a curve, and then you have to, you've got a stop sign there. So, you know, if you can install a mirror to try to ameliorate some of the issues, because there's typically bicycles, pedestrians, and traffic converging on there all at once sometimes, so you, you get that. But I think it's a, it's a pretty good project. I like the design. You know, this is, this is going to be quite an upgrade for that little area, so I'm, I'm kind of favorable to it.
Well, I, I also like the project. It's a, it's large, but it's, the way it's shielded by the vegetation, I think, is a good location. I'm sure that you, or I assume that you will do a good job of insulating, of insulating the walls in particular, and of course, show you those double-pane windows. That'll help a lot with noise, both for the occupants of the house and for people in the neighborhood, since it's right near the library and right by the path that, that people go by. It would be good to, to make sure that you address the noise issues. But it seems like it'll be a really nice space.
I think this is a great project. I really like the layout and everything. It's, it's also a big site, I think, so you can afford the height. But I, I, I like this project a lot. I support it, and I'm looking forward to seeing it get built. Yeah. I, I think it's going to be really nice to see how the massing works. The fact that you created these outdoor spaces, a transition from the indoor spaces is nice, so kudos.
Just to, just to mention that on the insulation, there's a, commonly what's used in wall insulation is fiberglass, but what I've found is is the cellulose insulation just does an amazingly good job as far as sound baffling, or possibly the stuff, what's it called, the stuff that's made from blue jeans. But either either one of them does a much better job than the than the fiberglass.
I think, I I really like the design. I think it's 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 a great asset to the neighborhood. I do have a little, I do have some concerns with the driveway. I don't know if that's, and the the big oak tree that has to be removed. I understand, I know that also the concerns with the with the corner there, but I'm sad if that tree has to go, so.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, sure. I'm not even going to propose that condition we discussed. I I just make a motion to approve application, where are we here? Where's the application number? Okay. Seventeen dash forty. Basically, as as written, I don't think we have any other conditions, changes or anything.
Just with the one condition that staff reworded.
Oh, the one condition that staff reworded. Okay, on that, on the extra page. So that's conditions H and I have been edited. So with motion to approve the application.
A second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. You have a great project. Thank you. There is, of course, a ten day appeal period, as you know.
We'll talk tomorrow. Yeah, we have the great ball. Thank you. Thank you. Planted Director's Report? Yes, and I'll try to run through this as quickly as possible. A question was asked about planning commission recordings and why it was simply on the videotape versus having a separate audio recording. And when I checked with the town clerk, the the gist of it was, is that it was felt that because the videotape has both audio and video, that it was unnecessarily duplicative to have a separate video, audio tape only, so it was just kind of dropped. So if there's a strong position or feeling about that, I could relay that back to her. But as things stand, you get you get a twofer with that recording. Planning Commission December meeting, I mentioned that moving it up to the fourteenth. Obviously, the twenty first is right in the thick of the Christmas season. I believe we will have things to discuss, not just leading up to the workshop, but one of the things that I I do want to discuss with the planning commission is kind of the potential concerns with SB thirty five. I've been engaged in discussions with various parties about that. I think, I don't see that Fairfax is going to be directly impacted. For those of you who are not intimately familiar with that, it's basically where the state, with exclusions and exceptions, allows multifamily residential in any zoning district that allows it in any way, shape, or form. And we have, for example, in our commercial districts, we allow it via use permit, and it would eliminate the discretionary review aspect. So it'd go from a use permit to ministerial only building permit review. The only things we could apply to that would be black line standards, things like setbacks, FAR, which incidentally, we don't have. The town is always relied on its discretionary review, I should say always relied, it appears to rely on its discretionary review to address many of the design considerations that are engendered in in those discretionary review processes. And so eliminating that potentially is a big deal. Now, we've been doing a lot of analysis of which properties in in zoning districts would be affected. It doesn't appear that it's too many because of the other exclusions, but it would be good to have that discussion. It also points towards the fact that there seems to be a move by the state. You saw that with the ADU, in terms of here comes the, you know, accessory dwelling units, which is a fairly minor change in the single family residential landscape, but nonetheless a change. Now we're moving into areas that potentially allow some form of housing under pretty tight restrictions formerly, and now it's moving into, well, you know, here, you you comply with hardline standards and you get to do it with just a, basically a building permit. I mean, they call it a streamlined review, but it's basically looking at, does it comply with these standards? So that's something that we will probably want to look at depending, pending the outcome of discussions and analysis of our zoning regulations. I would like to emphasize that the sky isn't falling. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why it's unlikely that we're going to have a flood of applications. Somebody is going to see some of these applications, though. It's going to be very interesting to see how it plays out. But I I think that the town should be looking at adopting form based standards, et cetera, because what may not be subject to this ministerial review only component at this time, with subsequent legislative efforts, may end up going that way. So I think that it's important that we try to be proactive in tuning up our our zoning regulations so that the type of buildings that, under some future iteration of state statute, can go in via building permit with just reference to hardline standards, is something that the town is comfortable, represents the best interest of the town. And by the way, another thing that's happening with SB thirty five, if one of those buildings is built, that's within a half a mile of a bus stop, it doesn't have to provide parking. So, you know, we're all, you know, chasing our tail, trying to provide housing to meet these, you know, recognized housing shortages, but it's a it's a concern.
Well, and that's one of the things that I had on, like, the planning commission comments list, is that I wanted to see a briefing on the new state laws, like thirty five. Somebody to me mentioned one sixty seven, because I have, and that and that would be great in a commission meeting, so the public can can be informed as as well, because I have questions, and it kind of refers to my questions of prior months when we talked about mapping in our current maps. When I look at those laws, I look at things where they talk about exceptions being, you know, in like hazard areas. And I don't know if that, when you get down to really analyzing the law, if any of what we have here in town falls under what they specifically list in the laws, like, you know, fire zones by the forestry department or something. But I think it's important for us to really understand the law and how it applies to our environment. So that was one of the things I wanted to see anyway, for this new state laws, to to have that as an agenda item at a commission meeting.
We have been looking at those exceptions and the fire hazard map, and I would be prepared to do a report. And relating directly to the mapping, I've been over to the county to talk to their GIS department. I've also been working with Sean Kennings, and we have some, you know, wonderful, almost historical documents that were done, and we, they need to be brought into the digital age so that we can relate those to actual property boundaries. Some of them do, some of them don't. But, yeah, that's part of the effort and probably part of the budget discussions as we go forward into the next fiscal year, is to get something that enables us to relatively quickly make these type of assessments about, you know, is it subject to a flood zone? Is it in a higher, very high fire hazard zone, et cetera, et cetera?
So, and just the currency. So we have current mappings. And and there was a comment at the last council meeting by a member of the public that I think mentioned walking into, you know, town hall and seeing the big map, you know. So, I mean, it it makes sense on every level to get those up to date.
Yeah, we've actually already updated those maps, and they're in the printing process right now. So that you should be able to see that hanging out at the front counter shortly, and I'll make a reduced copy for the planning commissioners if they'd like. So we're working on that. Things definitely, it's very interesting. In my career, I don't think I've seen as many state legislative actions with promise for more. That's what, I was at a planning director's meeting this week with Nancy Bennett Hall, and she said that the legislature seems to be discussing Marin County and, you know, our approaches and lack of construction of housing and things like that. So it it just, these things keep coming at us. So another thing, the planning commission workshop, we've narrowed it down to a week, we hope, in January, the week of January twenty first through the twenty sixth. And obviously, the weekend would potentially be in play also. So if you could check your calendars, I'll send out a reminder, of course, but if you could check to see if that that week would be available, ideally, we would get everyone available, including a newly appointed commissioner, who would be appointed by that time. The other thing I raised at the last meeting is if the possibility of getting a subcommittee to maybe work on items for that workshop, and specifically to follow through with the planning commission matrix. I want to commend Commissioner Green for taking a stab at that. And other aspects that a small subcommittee could work on include the work program for the next year. Other aspects, subcommittees, that general topic came up at the last meeting in regards to historic preservation. I did have conversations, and in terms, it's generally along the lines of if the commission feels that there's an interest, an area of interest that they would like to form a subcommittee, by all means, insofar as substantive topical areas that could fold into regulation changes or policy changes, it would be good to kind of outline what those areas of interest are, and then bring that back to the town council for their discussion and review and and feedback to the to the planning commission. This would probably also relate to our work program for the upcoming fiscal year. So if it happens to be historic preservation, you know, great, let's let's get a subcommittee together. But like I said, I'd love to get a subcommittee to help work on what we focus on for that upcoming workshop. And that's about it, unless somebody has something else.
Yeah, I would like to to say, you know, one, one thing that we've tried and it doesn't seem to work, and I I sent you guys a matrix that I kind of started working through with comments, and that is, you know, public perceptions that we need to kind of be aware of. And 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 one thing we definitely should be talking about in that workshop is, is what public workshops we might want to conduct. Because during, on the day before the election we just had, I got together with a bunch of friends, and we were all talking about Fairfax, and I was, you know, I was the expert, because I'm on the planning commission. And several people raised an issue that I thought was gonzo, and that is, are we, you know, this is the issue that's out there, okay? Are we, are we thinking about three and four stories for downtown, for our beautiful downtown, so that we can accommodate more affordable housing up above the retail? This is actually an issue that was, this is some kind of rumor that's going around. And there's there's way crazy stuff out there. I think we need to somehow simplify our our future plans, our downtown, you know, our downtown plan and our our C, C, H to CC, to make it a little easier for the public to understand exactly what it is. I don't know how we're going to do this, because rumors abound around here. But, you know, that was like the most gonzo comment, you know, which one of the people running on the ballot are favorable towards three and four stories all around downtown for affordable housing? Of course, I had to debunk it. I mean, it's it's.
It's a red area.
Yeah, but it's out there. So so there's things like that out there. We've had some pretty crazy comments here, too, that I think there needs to be some kind of subcommittee that might comprise of some members of the town council and this committee, and maybe all the other committees, to put together some educational programs and materials for various aspects of what we're doing. And that's, that's kind of my comment. I mean, I thought this was kind of crazy, so bringing it up.
Well, all along that line, transparency, information dissemination, with the wall slash Miranda Heights project, we will be posting the the application materials, which came in this last week, online within a week. And we will, are also, I'm going to be working with somebody in Recreation Department to design a webpage that's, will provide a little bit more graphics and things like that, with the idea towards getting what information that arises in connection to that project in a format that anybody who's interested can get as quickly as possible. I'm not sure what to do about situations where, like you said, it's kind of out there. It's like it's inconsistent with the zoning. It's never been discussed in in any town venue, so, you know, at some point, it's just a credibility issue, I guess, or not. So, yeah, just just continuing those public dialogues and and having that lines of communication open and saying no when something's a definite no. Yeah, we'll just have to keep working on it.
Well, the the, I certainly concur that there's a lot of crazy stuff out there, and the one you mentioned is is only one. In fact, that one, I I was at a council meeting a couple months ago, and I was just sitting out there in the, in the, in the audience, and a couple sat down next to me that I had never met before, so I asked them what they were there for. And the guy said he was there because of this big development. And I said, what big development would that be? And he said, the four story buildings downtown. And I said, you know, I, I think I would have heard about that, and I don't believe there's any four story buildings downtown proposed by anybody whatsoever. And he believed me, and he went home. It didn't take that much. That's, there's a lot of astonishing stuff out there. I've actually, during the campaign, I've walked door to door, and I've had hundreds, literally hundreds, of fairly lengthy conversations with people. And I've gotten quite an education about the, some of the, some of the ideas out there. And so, yeah, I think that we'll probably be discussing on the council, I would imagine, similar issues of of just how are we going to improve communication in town. I would point to, toward the latter part of the, whatever it is, five years that we spent discussing Victory Village, there was an FAQ that the town put out that I thought was really excellent. I remember that as being just a very well done thing. So one thing I would point to is things kind of along the lines of that Victory Village FAQ that are put out more proactively, sort of without waiting until something becomes an issue in town that's got the town getting divided over it. But just sort of, as you were mentioning, Ben, with it too, what you just. was really excellent. I remember that as being just a very well-done thing. So, one thing I would point to is things kind of along the lines of that Victory Village FAQ that are put out more proactively, sort of without waiting until something becomes an issue in town that's got the town getting divided over it. But just sort of, as you were mentioning, Ben, with, to what you just said, as I heard it, it sounded like you were saying that you wanted to, as this application comes in, to already start thinking about how to present it in a, sort of a summary form that's easy to understand. And make, put those, put that presentation on the town website so that it's, so that the town website is the authoritative source of information and we don't have to depend on social media as the authoritative source of information because it's not. It's not authoritative and it's not accurate sometimes. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not, but it's, it shouldn't be left to chance whether the public has accurate information. Another thing that I've noticed is that, for example, CH to CC, that is a fairly simple concept, as I understand it. We've got these highway commercial zones at the ends of town, which are kind of odd for Fairfax because we don't even really have a highway and we don't want to have a highway and we don't want things to look like strip malls, but that's what that zoning is for. And so, and what we love is our downtown, which is CC zone. And so, the concept of changing the CH zoning to be CC zoned, it would seem like that would be a slam dunk in Fairfax on the face of it. And yet, it's become this huge controversy. And the controversy always refers to it ruining the downtown, but the downtown is the part that isn't being changed. So, how did we get so screwed up about something so simple? And I would say that as I've talked with people, I've come to realize that one of the reasons is because a couple of things were rolled together into one. There was also something that we discussed on this commission at some length, and I think we passed back to council with some recommendations, and I don't think it's gone any farther. But that was the changing of the, the list of permitted uses in the CC zone to, from a, from a list of specific uses to sort of a more category thing, which also is a reasonable thing on the face of it to do. We went through it. We noticed some specific issues, like we heard about the body shop, the auto body shop that, that might be affected by becoming a non-permitted use and that that might affect their business. And so, we pointed that out, as I recall. And as it went back to council, it went back with the recommendation that they get together with the lawyers and think about some way to address that so that that doesn't affect that business. So, we're, we're aware of that issue. It's not resolved yet. But, so, all of these things, when taken one by one, I find that when I communicated with people about those things, they weren't dissatisfied with what we were doing at all. But the fact that they were all munged together, you know, it ends up being very easy to get, to get into this situation, whether it's just by accident, like a game of telephone, or whether it's because it's an election year. But somehow, we end up getting into this thing where the CH to CC zoning is ruining the downtown and screwing up the body shop. And what are we doing, you know? And it's consultants that are destroying our town. And all these things get all munged together. And maybe part of the issue is that we are actually putting them together ourselves. I mean, that was a decision, I believe, on, of Jim to, while doing the CH to CC zoning, wouldn't that be a good time to also do the, look at the use categories? But that, I'm only now realizing that, oh, those are actually two completely separate issues. And by putting them together, it's one thing that leads to the confusion and to the general feeling that the public sometimes seems to have. If they, if they have a propensity to worry and distrust, then they feel like, well, there's a lot of complicated stuff going on and I can't even follow it. I can't figure out how one thing relates to another. And so, if, you know, that may lead to a feeling, just an emotional feeling of, God, something is weird, something's going on here that's, you know, there's a lot going on and I can't even follow it all. And so, by having multiple things tied together that aren't necessarily even related, it may sort of step right into that, into that problem.
Well, the other problem is the misinformation that is a deliberate attempt to confuse the issue and bamboozle people for whatever reason. And I'll leave it at that.
Going back to the workshop week, were you looking, you wanted us to look that week to see what days were? You weren't looking at the whole week, right?
No, no.
So, just picking, if there's any days there that don't work, including the weekend?
Yeah, I mean, my primary concern is if people are not available at all during that week, in which case, you know, if there's more than one or so, then I would say we'd probably want to scramble around and try, the hope is to get the entire commission. All your input is important. So, if you could just check your schedules.
We're talking about a three-hour session?
Might be all day. If it's, if it's on the weekend, you know, I could envision all day. And if you have a site, again, Commissioner Green came up with a suggestion, but if you have a location, that would be good for off-campus workshop, just to minimize distractions.
I can tell you right off the bat, Monday through Friday that week is completely out for me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'll just, I'll tell you, too. I'm good on Sunday, the 21st and any of those days that week that it's after 5:00. But I'm not good on, let's see, it was the 21st through 26th. So, 21st would be great, 22nd through 26th probably not before 5:00 p.m. And Friday, the 26th is out for me.
Can we just look at the two-
How about Saturday?
Weekends then? The weekend before and the weekend after?
How about Saturday, the 27th?
Yeah.
Because you had said to the 26th, but it leaves out Saturday.
I'm sorry, I erred. I was just thinking of the work week.
Yeah.
Obviously, this would go-
Obviously, yeah, people work.
So, the 19th through the 20th.
For a Saturday to a Sunday? You, you prefer Sunday to Saturday?
So, if we let you know on those two ending the weekend before and the weekend after, Saturday and Sunday, which works for us? Okay?
Both work for me, both weekends, the 20th and the 27th. The 14th of December, I'm out of town, so.
Okay.
You can make a note, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, I'll be sending an email so we can get this all done and ready. I'm just putting it in your, I mean, I think I've mentioned that 14th before.
Since we have a planning commission meeting on January 18th, rather than doing Saturday, the 20th, I would prefer the 27th. I have three night meetings that week, so.
So, is there anybody here who can't make it on the 27th?
Let me check my calendar and get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I generally don't have Saturdays, but I'll just check that one special and see what I can do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your report.
I had a question, if we're done with checking calendars, about Victory Village. I'm hearing information, do we know what the status of that is?
Victory Village didn't make it through the first round of funding. They're cautiously optimistic that it would qualify this spring. I know that there's some significant challenges because apparently there's some bonds that have been passed in, in other counties to help sweeten the pot for affordable housing projects. But, you know, stay tuned. I haven't heard anything more recently. I could, I could check with the town manager and see if he's heard anything.
Do they have an expiration date with us?
Not for two or three years at minimum.
Okay, great, thanks.
Keep our fingers crossed on their April application.
Yeah.
Is 74 Cypress Drive coming back to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Or coming back to somebody? And has staff, is staff looking into the formation of an advisory committee for the historical inventory or however that's going to work? Taking up Cassidy on her offer, basically?
Well, I think that's a kind of a planning commission initiative if the commission wants to support Cassidy in that endeavor. You know, I think it's, that's, I could tell from the preliminary comments that the commission had that there were that this is a multifaceted topic and, you know, there's many different ways to approach historic preservation and that type of thing. But that's definitely one that there would probably want to be a conceptual outline and then go to the council and get their feedback.
So, that'd be something that we'd throw into the matrix pot for the workshop?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and if, if, I mean, I did, I did kind of volunteer to, you know, do a subcommittee. If there was another person or if there's some guidance you can give me, you know, as to what, what to do to come up with some stuff, you know, let me know. Well, I think it's more or less to review these ordinance changes and matrix issues and kind of help prioritize them for the purpose of the workshop.
Correct. Yeah, I mean-
But the issue with that, and I'm guilty, is you're the only one that's provided input so far. So, I think the first part of that is that we all have to provide our input.
Right, and I've only gone halfway through the matrix to do that.
And then look at that, yeah.
But on historical preservation, you know, I mean, this can go all over the place. And just as an example, I saw on the news the other day that there's a, there's a small town that has a lot of neon signs. And they consider those neon signs historical. So, there was a, a number of businesses that wanted to take their signs down, replace them with more modern ones. And it's sort of what you can get into with this is they weren't allowed to. They had to keep their neon sign and spend the money to fix it up because it was designated historical. So, we have to be really careful, you know, what we do with this stuff or we can make it kind of more restrictive than we want to.
Right.
But I think the first step is an inventory and, you know, there's, I would say we should go for that because ultimately, that's where it's got to start and we don't even have that yet, so.
Yeah, anything from the Summer of Love at this point is potentially historic.
Right, right. Yeah, right. In fact, I'm an antique now, 50 years, it's really good. Can I suggest we go on to-
To the minutes?
The minutes.
Thank you. I have one tiny tweak on the minutes. Page three, Rick Williams spells his name with a K, R.I.C.K.
Which, which minutes?
The first, the first minutes of the April 20th, the public hearing on Victory Village, page three, Rick Williams with a K.
And on page two, about two-thirds of the way down, it refers to the Great and Federation Indian Tribe. That would be the Federated Tribes of the Great and Rancheria, which is also spelled, that's all, all correct in other places. So, for example, on page six, the name is correct.
Were those minutes drafted back then and we just haven't?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because going through them, we had talked before about having in minutes kind of the analysis or the reasonings for how we got to. So, I, yeah, I thought that was the case.
Yes.
I certainly don't want to put any extra work on the minutes clerk. I suppose that's who does these. But if she is, as she goes through these, she's listening to or watching the video, I don't know if that's how she does it. But if she does, it would be so cool if the time on the video were occasionally popped into the minutes because then if later you want to listen to the video and hear the thing, you'd be able to find it easily. But, I mean, not if it's not really easy to do. Like if she's right there watching the video and could just jot them down, that would be, that would be great. But if she's getting it from another source, then that's another task, don't do it.
Given the complexity of that meeting, I thought the minutes were excellent.
And she may just tape them on the TV where she wouldn't be seeing that, so.
It's actually hard to do. I mean, I have to sometimes review a film for issues and you have to have the minutes and seconds there. And it's really hard to do. You have to stop it, start it, you know, make sure you're right on and it, I don't know. It'll be great. I have one, are we on the October minutes yet or?
No.
Okay, one comment on page six of the October minutes. Commissioner Green provided the following comments. It's sort of one-third, it's the upper third of the page. The last one, I say that, I'm, I'm saying this is not a formula business. I think I said it does not appear to be a formula business.
On page two of those, the second minutes, fourth paragraph, it says Mr. De Baker, it would be Ms. De Baker. And, yeah, I think that's it on there. Let's see, is there anything else? And then back on the first minutes, actually, on page six. It's, page five, I'm sorry. And the two-thirds of the way down, it says the commissioner took a five-minute break. I think it was all the commissioners. The commission took a five-minute break. And that's it for me.
That's all I have.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the April 20th, 2017 minutes with the corrections noted and the October 19th, 2017 minutes with the corrections noted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved, thank you.
And we're missing March minutes? Oh, on the website?
I'll double-check and let you know.
Okay, I'll, I'll email you.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a-
Just a second, there's a commissioner comment.
Yeah, I did. I wanted to congratulate Bruce on his election to the town council and also commend Cindy for her run. And, you know, I think that for everybody at home who is throwing things at the television during our meetings, there will be an opening.
Ah, so there.
And, thank you. And I suppose this is the point at which I have to resign from this commission. So, that's with great sadness because I've really enjoyed it tremendously, working with all of you and working with the staff. Hope I enjoy the next phase half as much, but anyway, there will be an opening and I only am leaving because I need to.
Good luck.
And you will be sorely missed.
I want to make an announcement for Saturday. It's the Cascade Firewise meeting, for anyone that might be listening. It's open to the whole town. The meeting will be here in the women's club from 10:00 to 12:15.
I've got that on my calendar.
And then my only other comment would be just to check on the status. We've kind of talked about this before, about how long it takes some approvals to get done. So, kind of as a general comment, but we've also got the, I think, 31 Bellinas that still has some of the equipment, I think, on the roof that hasn't been blocked. And then their signage issue, too, that, that we approved. And then their signage issue, too, that, that we approved. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, staff. Excellent staff reports, they just get better and better.